And I'll look, good morning. I'll look to the hearing team to please elevate the court reporter. And then I will look to our court reporter. Are you ready for us to go on the record?
Yes, I am ready to go.
And I can hear you. Wonderful. Good morning.
Morning.
I will go ahead and get started with our introductions. Good morning. It is June 11th, 2025. I'm Nicole Kinsey, Presiding Hearing Officer for the Administrative Hearings Office of the State Water Resources Control Board. This is the hearing on the pending petitions for change of water right permits 16478, 16479, 16481, and 16482 of the Department of Water Resources for the proposed Delta Conveyance Project. I'm conducting this hearing in accordance with the July 31st Notice of Public Hearing and subsequent amendments. The hearing is today is being conducted by Zoom webinar and is being broadcast live on the AHO YouTube channel. Both the audio and video of the hearing are being recorded, and we will post files of this recording in the FTP folder for this proceeding. The YouTube recording will also be available on the AHO YouTube webpage. Ms. Mullen will be handling the screen sharing of exhibits today, so you're welcome to address her directly if you would like her to bring up a particular exhibit. Uh, we will, we will proceed according to our usual schedule. We will take breaks. Um, we'll take a lunch break as needed, and we will have a hard stop at 5:00 PM if we get that far in our day. I think where we left things yesterday was, um, I was going to turn to others of the Protestants. I have, I don't know if this is the order that you proposed, but in the list that I wrote down, I have Ms. Missouri first. Uh, and then I have Mr. Moore, the South Delta Water Agencies, Placer County and Eldorado Irrigation District. Or maybe it's Placer County Water Agency, and then DTEC and Ms. Dejardin, um, both of those in the afternoon. So you're welcome to change that order, uh, but that's what I had written down. The, uh, some other minor procedural things. One, uh, well, let's go ahead and if we can bring Ms. Carroll up and, and take Ms. Carroll's appearance, that would be wonderful. If we can please elevate Ms. Carroll. Good morning.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Kinsey and Carol for the Department of Water Resources.
Good morning. Uh, one thing I wanted to note, we had, um, on our end, I believe we had received some or we've had some communication about the May 1st transcript for the hearing, which, as I understand, was submitted to us with a password protection. I don't think we have the unlocked version, and I just wanted to make sure that came to your attention as well. So I was asked by my team to ask you, so I've done that now.
It has come to our attention. We have requested the password. Um, we are still working through.
I see. That makes sense to me. So thank you very much. And then I will also note for everyone that we have, the AHO has had the May 19th Policy Statement Day transcribed, and that, um, that transcript is available now on the FTP site, uh, should you care to use it. I believe those were the minor procedural things. The other issue I think maybe we'll visit at the end of the day are evidentiary rulings. I understand we have some of the transcripts, but not all. And I was going to think through whether it makes sense to go ahead and set deadlines for evidentiary objections. I shouldn't say rulings, evidentiary objections, offers of, of DWR's exhibits and then objections and so forth. Uh, I think last time where we had left it was coming to the conclusion that it would be best to have the transcripts, and I realize we don't have all of them. Uh, but I'm also aware of the case in chief deadline. I'm not sure whether the Protestants have concerns about not having clear rulings on the, um, the accepted evidence from DWR, although it may not, it may not matter, in which case I'm happy to set that out a little bit, although I would like to get it done before we start up with hearing days again, so that it's, uh, keep the workflow moving. Uh, Ms. Carol.
Yes, we are asking again about the password protection. Um, we have been working on that. We just haven't had a response yet. The other minor, um, issue that I wanted to bring up is yesterday we mentioned that there were additional errata with the coding in Ms. Wu's report. Uh, we have corrected that page 19 and have uploaded it to the FTP site.
Thank you. We will find it there and move it over. I think with that background, we're ready to turn back to the witnesses. Um, so if we can please have Ms. White, uh, Mr. Fitzhugh and Ms. Wu raise your virtual hands and have my team please elevate our witnesses. And then if we can also, uh, elevate Ms. Morris, if she is on in the virtual room. Yes, there she is. Good morning, Mr. Fitzhugh. Good morning, Ms. Wu. And good morning, Ms. Morris.
Good morning.
And Ms. White. Oh, there you are. Now we can see you. Good morning.
Morning.
And we can hear you. Uh, so we're checked there, and if we can please elevate Mr. Krieger as our, as our usual practice. Good morning, Mr. Krieger.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Miles Krieger for the State Water Contractors.
Thank you. And to the hearing team, if you would please elevate Ms. Missouri. Good morning, Ms. Missouri.
Good morning, OSHA Missouri for Contra Costa et al. Um, yeah, we, uh, this morning, um, the order would be Mr. Moore, and then me, and then, um, Mr. Ruiz, and then I believe that Ms. Dejardin and the DTEC, um, uh, group are asking to go in the afternoon. We can kind of see where we end up this morning and see if that can be accommodated, but I believe they weren't available in the morning. Um, now also note that, uh, Mr. Moore and I are going before, uh, Mr. Ruiz, because he's got another court. Uh, he's got to appear as a witness in court, uh, at 9:00 AM, so he's hoping very much to be wrapped up with that, um, by 10 o'clock. Um, but that's, um, kind of what we're looking at schedule wise is to put him after, after me, um, when hopefully he'll be back here by that time.
Understood. Thank you. And we'll try to accommodate that. We can take a break if we need to. So I, I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, uh, orientation. So I think with that, I'll look to elevate Mr. Moore to panelist status. Good morning, Mr. Moore.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yes. So I'll pause before we get started. It looks like we have Ms. Carroll and our witnesses, but are there any other procedural issues we should address before I hand things over to Mr. Moore?
All right, hearing nobody else. I, I do have one quick one.
Great.
A clarification I'm hoping to get that relates to something came up yesterday that may conceivably affect the scope of, uh, cross X questions today, not just my own, but potentially others. Um, in previous days of testimony and cross acts, it's frequently come up that it has been permissible thus far, uh, at least until yesterday, to ask questions whose framing is not strictly within the parameters of the testimony itself, but relates to hearing issues that, that can be explained in context. It seemed yesterday, although I hope I misunderstood it, and perhaps I have, that, uh, when pretty frequent objections were raised to matters that were viewed, uh, at least by Ms. Morris, is, is not within the four corners of the four questions that were posed for supplemental information. Uh, that, that, the, the scope of questions might, might also go in a different category and, and not be related in the way that previous testimony, uh, uh, had done. The concern I have about this, which I wanted to check with you on, um, is how that relates to the, uh, uh, statements in, uh, your hearing notices relating to the role of the supplemental testimony. And I want to refer to, I think, the first time this, this came up, uh, in the, um, uh, November 18th, 2024 amended hearing notice that delineated the, the two scenarios, uh, 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 based on the, uh, with, with one, uh, uh, keyed to the beneficial uses achieved by the end of, uh, 2009, and, and the other not so. Um, and it, it, there was a statement on page 10 of that notice that, that said that in addition to the four specific requests, the expectation of the AHO was that, that, uh, evidence would be presented in the case in chief, uh, from the petitioner, that, that would at a minimum, uh, uh, follow the scenarios. And then, then it said the AHO expects the petitioner will provide an equivalent level of information and analysis, uh, for both scenarios. And it, and it goes on. I, I'm sure you remember the reference. Um, now I'm not going to quibble about the decisions that DWR makes, uh, you know, whether it conceivably come, potentially impairs its case in chief by not presenting them, uh, the two scenarios on an equivalent basis is, is, I suppose is prerogative. My concern is as it relates to cross examination questions. Uh, if we do not have the same leeway in, uh, in, uh, asking questions about sworn testimony, uh, on the second scenario that we do on the first, when it seems like we've had months so far on only one of these, it, it, it seems like it might do away with the fundamental assumption that, 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 that the, the scenarios are being considered on an equivalent basis here. So I, I appreciate your thoughts on that. I, I hope that what it means is that, that we can ask questions that are related to hearing issues. And I, I would expect all of us today will, will, uh, you know, in the vast majority of times, key them to the four questions anyway, but, but I, I'd appreciate your thoughts about whether, whether that, that is still the case, that, that, that these are viewed as equivalent scenarios for purposes of evidence, information, and analysis.
So I'll try. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'll, I'll try my best to the extent I understand the, the question. One, I, I think there is a distinction here, and I intended there to be a distinction between the, the, the questioning and cross examination of these witnesses because they are here uh, at my direction, and they were not volunteered by DWR, and we have a limited time with them. So the, the, my intent is to stay within the scope of questions that are relevant to the historical use information. That is not to foreclose or, um, and this is not a prejudiced, a ruling with prejudice on whether or not it would be appropriate for, um, Protestants to seek to call those witnesses at another time and ask questions that are relevant to the hearing issues. But outside of the scope of this historical use information, I think that's a question that we should, that would be appropriately considered separately. Um, with respect to scenario A and scenario B, frankly, I'm not sure I followed that. So I think maybe it would be better addressed in context when you ask the questions that, that I would understand, um, more clearly where, where we're going. And because I think potentially the historical use information is relevant to, um, at least scenario B, but potentially, I'm not sure. It's hard for me to, the hypothetical is, is a little, maybe I need some more coffee this morning, but I, I'm just not sure on that one. Um, so maybe that's a quick rundown. Uh, does that address at least some of your questions and give us a path forward for today?
Okay, if, if I understand your clarification, which I do appreciate, um, uh, assuming, as I was assuming the case, that, 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 that the questions pertaining to the supplemental information are, uh, you know, potentially there to illuminate scenario B, it is okay to ask questions, um, that, that relate those to broader hearing issues. Um, that may refer to testimony that say other, other DWR, uh, witnesses have raised elsewhere in the proceeding.
Let's see how it plays. Look, I, I don't want to give a, let, let's see where the questions are. Um, I'm having a, this, we're speaking in hypotheticals, so I, I'm, give me the, uh, let's, let's go forward and see how they play out. I'd like to see it in context, frankly, I'm.
Oh, okay. I, I understand. I mean, we've previously articulated our concern that, that, you know, there's a sense in which all of scenario A is, is based on a, 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 a hypothetical granting of, um, uh, a, a revision that is, i- it has not occurred yet.
Or a trailer bill approval. There's, or something. Now there's.
I'm not even gonna go there, but duly noted, of course. Uh, anyway, I, I, I appreciate you hearing me out on this. Uh, I, I will certainly attempt to, to keep the questions focused on, on the supplemental information. But I do think that the, you know, the purpose of, the broader purpose of that is, is, uh, to look at their potential relationship to, to the other hearing issues that have been identified.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I, I think, I think we have a path forward.
Okay.
With that, I will, um, hand things over to you for your questions for these witnesses.
Uh, thank you very much, and I think I'm going to try to go in order here, although there may be a little skirting back and forth depending on who's best able to answer the question. So let's start with, uh, the testimony of Ms. White, and I believe it's 310. And there were, I did want to ask about that because there were, um, references yesterday to her, uh, errata. I did not see in the FTP when I looked the, an updated one of the 310 E or whatever it would be. So I, I guess I would ask you, what is the current iteration of that? And, uh, and would Ms. Mullen be able to pull that up?
And you're referring to Ms. Wu's report?
No, uh, the testimony of, of Molly White, that, that I have in front of me is DW1310. But I'm inquiring about whether there's a tweaked version that, uh, I did not see when I looked at the P, uh, the PDF, the FTP site.
FTP site.
And this is Ms. Morris. It's 310E. It was uploaded yesterday morning, and I've seen yesterday it was moved out of the folder. I, I did not confirm that it got moved into our exhibit folder, but it was pulled up by Ms. Mullen yesterday, 310E.
Yes, and it looks like, it sounds like we have it.
Okay.
And sorry, just for ease of reference, and because I know everyone can't listen every day, there is also 312E, which is Mr. Fitzhugh's report. And then Ms. Wu's report is 311E2, which has the corrections for the tables that was uploaded this morning, to the extent that's helpful for efficiency purposes.
Thank you. And just to confirm for all the 311, um, DWR 3112 corrected version is now, we've received it and it should be now available to all of you on the FTP site. With that, back to you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, and, uh, I hope it may help here since we have, um, you know, multiple iterations of very similar but not identical things that, that I think it's the case that, that, um, the, the questions that I'm going to have this morning aren't, aren't going to be particularly related to the tweaking that occurred on, on, you know, the several items on, on, um, uh, each of the bits of, of testimony.
Mr. Moore, just to let you know, the tweaking was really to typos and to references to exhibits, so it should not affect the substance of the exhibits.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I understand your position on that. I, uh, let's go to, um, I have the, the page numbers, but not the PDF numbers. My apologies, but it looks like they may be the same here. Uh, uh, page one, uh, lines, 15 through 18, which, um, Ms. White refers, uh, to the, uh, activities of, of the Water Management Group, as I, I understand it. And it refers to, among other things, uh, uh, the administration of the long-term, uh, state water project, water supply contracts. Um, are you aware of how many of those contracts there are?
We have 29 long-term state water supply contracts.
And did you review those contracts in preparing this testimony?
No.
And are you aware of whether DWR has, um, uh, provided those contracts or put them into evidence anywhere in its case in chief submissions?
Objection, relevance. This is all questions that could have been asked of Ms. White during her operations testimony. This has nothing to do with the calculations or the information that was requested by the AHO.
I'm going to allow it to seem where Mr. Moore is going. So please, Ms. White, if you are able to answer.
I am not aware if they are in, if they've been provided.
And the next part of this sentence up to, of the period, and here I think I'm in on, uh, 17 and 18, refers to, uh, planning and implementation of water supply resiliency initiatives that require SWP facilitation or integration. Um, are you understanding the Delta Conveyance Project to be one of those?
I would put the Delta Conveyance Project into that subset.
Okay. Um, can you explain what you mean here by the, the term facilitation or integration?
Certainly, that is with respect to, um, an example, our, our WISIP projects under Prop 1, um, where we have, where the state water project will facilitate an action, but it's not a DWR initiative itself.
Okay. Um, and here I want to be clear that I, I, I do not want, and I am not asking for a legal opinion on this subject. But, um, did you consider or, or are you aware whether or not the Delta Conveyance Project is currently designated as a state water project facility?
Objection, relevance?
What is the relevance, Mr. Moore?
The witnesses use the term facilitation or integration. Uh, the ability to do that may have, we think, significant implications for, uh, meeting the project objectives as stated, determining whether this matter is in, uh, the public interest, uh, and can avoid injury to water users.
Let's get, Mr. Moore, let's get to the historical use information. Can we move to that, questioning about that?
Well, uh, let me ask it in the context of the historical use information, uh, under, under the, assuming that, that the historical use information, um, uh, i- is considered in the context of the, the scenario in which the extension of beneficial uses after 2009 is ultimately not granted. Um, do you believe that the state, that the Delta Conveyance Project would already be considered part of the state water project? Or that some further action would need to be taken for that to occur?
Relevance, outside the scope of this limited information, uh, AHO information request, and also calls for a legal conclusion. And there's currently cases where Mr. Moore is involved in that are addressing this issue.
I'm going to overrule it because, based on, I believe this is potentially relevant to Mr. Fitzhugh's analysis, which incorporated the Delta Conveyance Project and compared, uh, the, this with and without limits scenario. So I'm going to allow the question on that basis, noting the, the, the objection based on, um, calling for a legal conclusion and understanding the, uh, the scope of Ms. White's expertise. So with that, yes, Ms. Morris.
Could I just add that, that hearing officer's request asks us to assume that we can divert that water. And so it's really not part of this request. I mean, it is in essence saying, if you were required to have, um, the pre-2009 historical maximum use, how could you use the DCP? It assumes that we can use the DCP. And so asking questions about the legality of whether or not the state water project facilities include the DCP is really a legal question that is outside the scope of this hearing, frankly, and as well as outside the scope of this limited request.
So maybe I'm misunderstanding the import of the question, which sounds like I am if there's litigation on it. I understood the question to just be a clarification about when Ms. White uses the term, uh, SWP facilitation or integration, whether or not that would include the proposed Delta Conveyance Project. Mr. Moore, is that your question? What are you getting at?
Yes, it, it, yeah, and I, I tried to make clear, and perhaps not enough so, that my question was not about the underlying issues of legality, uh, uh, some pending elsewhere or some perhaps in the future that, uh, uh, that, that are not currently before you. But the witness has used this term facilitation or integration. And so I want to get her understanding about whether that potentially, uh, 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 means a, um, uh, um, uh, whether she understands it to potentially require action that has not occurred.
And same objection, and she's already answered that she include, it could be included in implementation. And the question goes far beyond that and calls for a legal conclusion.
Let me ask, maybe, I, I'm going to ask the question. Ms. White, when you drafted this sentence, which starts, looks like at line 15, uh, and ends with, uh, water supply resiliency initiatives that require SWP facilitation or integration, uh, was it your intent in drafting that sentence that the uh, was it your intent in drafting that sentence that the proposed Delta Conveyance Project might be included within those initiatives?
Yes, it is a summary sentence on the scope of what the Water Management Group does within the state water project. We look at all sorts of different types of potential projects that would have the need for the state water project to facilitate or eventually implement. Um, that could be healthy rivers and landscape. It could be the WISIP pro- project or WISIP program. So it, it's, it's a general description, very high level on the type of work that the Water Management Group does.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And with that, back to you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. And let, now let's move on to page two. Uh, and I uh, want to go to uh, footnotes one and two that are referenced on line six and appear at the bottom of the page. And here, I've, I've tried my best to not be redundant, but having had to miss part of yesterday, for, forgive me if I am rehashing something that has been a- a- addressed. Uh, but, but my first question is, uh, um, for footnote one, i- is this something that you drafted or did somebody else?
I testified yesterday that um, these footnotes were added to my testimony. But I didn't, I did not draft them.
Okay. And um, can you identify who did draft them?
Um, the, my uh, legal team.
Anyone in particular on the legal team?
Mr. Moore, what is the relevance of this?
Well, your amended orders, while they do not make the extension issues, hearing issues, contrary to what some have suggested, um, do indicate a need to um, uh, uh, an openness to considering the relationship between the proceedings that may need to occur, occur from time to time. And um, I am not asking for and do not want legal opinions here, but I uh, um, I am concerned about how some of this language may affect the ability of this proceeding to yield clear conclusions on specific hearing issues. And um, so, so that's my purpose for answer, uh, for asking the question. And I'm really going to try to be brief on this.
Well, let's move to, I'm not, I, I don't see a reason to identify the particular member of the legal team who drafted footnote. I assume you're focused on.
I, I'm willing to withdraw that one that and simply accept that, that it is a conclusion of, of the, the uh, the legal team. But Ms. White, am I correct in assuming that you did review this and, and agree to include it in, in your testimony uh, before it became fine?
Absolutely. I'm aware, definitely aware of the footnotes. Yes.
Um, the footnote one refers to a um, uh, the petition for extension that was filed in, in uh, December two thousand nine and ultimately withdrawn in August uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, did you consider in preparing your testimony why that petition was withdrawn in twenty twenty-four?
Objection, relevance.
I'll allow the question if you, if you know, Ms. White.
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, and then the, the last part of footnote one indicates that, that the petition is currently pending before the State Water Board. Are you aware of whether or not that uh, new petition has been accepted and processed for filing?
Objection, relevance outside the scope.
I, I'm going to allow Ms. White to answer. I think that's in the testimony, but I could be, I could be wrong. Ms. White, is that part of your, a response to that part of your testimony? Or am I misremembering that?
I think I need to hear the question again. I'm.
The reference to the new petition for extension filed in January twenty twenty-five says it's currently pending before the State Water Board. Are you aware? I, i- i- it's, i- it's really yes or no. Are, are you aware of whether or not that petition has been uh, accepted and processed for um, for filing at the state water?
I'm aware that the petition, the two thousand nine petition was submitted and withdrew, drawn. I am aware that we filed for, refiled the petition and that's the extent of my knowledge of the status of the petition.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to paragraph eight, which uh, and I'm looking, I guess, at the, the text from sixteen through twenty-three on, on, on this page. Um, uh, and I realize that it refers to three eleven, so it, it may also be a question for um, Ms. Wu either in, in addition or, or instead. But um, it indicates that this uh, pre-end and uh, post-two thousand ten distinction that um, prior to two thousand ten, the state board did not require reporting on an individual water rights where a, a water rights holder had multiple permits with uh, uh, overlapping uh, components. Uh, and it indicates that the DWR follow, now follows uh, uh, the guidelines that are provided by the state board and, and, and laid out in DWR three thirteen uh, uh, for calculating and reporting water rights data. Is that a fair summary of what you're saying here?
Yes, we follow the board's guidelines in our accounting and reporting for our water rights permits.
Now, when you say that DWR follows uh, uh, these guidelines for the purpose of calculating and reporting water rights data, um, are you aware of whether DWR does not follow those guidelines in some other respects?
Objection, vague and ambiguous as to some other respects.
Well, it is indicated, i- i- the, the sentence referred to refers to a specific purpose, calculating and reporting water rights data. So what I'm wondering is, um, uh, does the reference to that mean that there may be other purposes uh, uh, for which DWR does not follow these guidelines?
Objection, vague and ambiguous as to other purposes. R- reporting or I'm unclear what the question's asking.
The witness is the one who has drawn the distinction.
I'm going to overrule the, the objection. I think to, to the extent you can, Ms. White, please respond to that.
As stated in my testimony, DWR follows the guidelines entitled water right licensing or the process of water right licensing to calculate and account for our water rights and reporting to the water board. Ms. Wu's testimony dash zero zero three one one E dash two has ex- extensive information on how we use those guidelines for the purpose of calculating the four supplemental information requests.
And they, I suppose then that this will be a question for, for either you or, or, or Ms. Wu. But are you aware of whether uh, the state board had a different set of guidelines in before two thousand ten?
I'm not aware of a different set of guidelines before two thousand ten.
And Ms. White, is that the case for you as well?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Um, and are either of you aware of any attempt that may have been made, made to find out from the state board uh, what, if any, guidelines were in effect prior to two thousand ten?
Uh, objection, vague and ambiguous as to the time in which someone was trying to find out information.
Prior to two thousand ten?
Ms. Wu, are you able, or Ms. White, I'm not sure who was directed to, I think Ms. Wu, are you able to answer the question or do you need it again?
Can you ask the question again?
Yeah, let, let me try to be a little clearer wh- wh- what I'm getting. Um, the um, supplemental information relates to beneficial, i- 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 uh, largely relates to information about beneficial uses through the end of, of two thousand nine. Uh, uh, the testimony only refers to guidelines that have gone into effect subsequent to that. So what I'm trying to find out is uh, uh, whether either of you made uh, made an attempt to find out from the state board what if any guidelines were in effect uh, uh, in two thousand nine?
Well, my understanding is the department worked with the state water board to submit the calculations that's um, acceptable or comply with the requirements with respect to the, the time when the data was submitted. Um, I'm not aware of any specific attempt to look for a guideline document per se.
Okay, let's go on to um, page four. And I want to look at the reference to the um, maximum diversion volume uh, in information request uh, two. Um, and that apparently occurred according to your testimony, uh, Ms. White, in, in two thousand five. Is that correct?
Correct.
And did I an- understand uh, uh, the responses yesterday to uh, reflect the fact that there um, wasn't an attempt to identify the specific beneficial uses that, that um, came out of that maximum diversion volume?
Can you be more specific, please? I know there's a lot of testimony yesterday on this.
Okay, uh, let me actually move on to something that um, I, I'm not sure uh, has been covered. Um, there's a sentence uh, on thirteen to four, fourteen, the, the volume is measured at, as the state water project exports at Banks Pumping Plant. Um, specifically what exists at Bank Pumping Plant that allows for that measurement?
Can you be more specific? It's a pumping plant with pumping units.
Do you know whether or not it has that measuring capability that it is referred to in this sentence?
We do measure the amount of water that we pump through Banks Pumping Plant.
Let's go on to um, paragraph twelve. And there's the sentence, water is put to beneficial use after it is withdrawn from storage uh, because the act of storing uh, water is not itself a beneficial use. Um, did I understand the testimony on this uh, yesterday to, to reflect that, that, that what DWR is looking at here is um, uh, that that some of the water that goes to state water contractors um, goes out of DWR's hands, but goes to storage rather than some more immediate beneficial use. Is that a, an accurate summary of what you're getting across here?
In general, that's the description of how we calculate and account for water put to beneficial use.
And did I also understand the, the testimony yesterday? I think it was from more than one um, cross-examiner uh, uh, to reflect that that what DWR is looking at here is simply um, um, providing the water that, that specific water contractors may store later.
As I mentioned, there was a lot of testimony on this yesterday with Ms. Wu. Is there a specific question? I, I'm, I'm not tracking a, a question there. And
Are, oh, let me ask one that I'm not sure has, forgive me if this has, uh, been asked too, uh, but I, I didn't see it in, in, in what I read. Um, when individual state water contractors uh, put water in storage, um, which then may be later beneficially used for something. Um, do you know whether this is always done in state water project facilities? Um, do you know whether this is always done in state water project facilities?
Perhaps it would be best to have Janice describe the beneficial use calculations.
Can you repeat your question again?
The water that goes to state water contractors for beneficial use, which this, this. Testimony is indicating then maybe used in a, in a different year. Uh, it, it goes in storage somewhere. My question is, are all the places that it goes in storage state water project facilities?
Hmm, as I testified yesterday, for the purpose of my report, um. For the calculation of beneficial use, we consider water delivered, um, when water leaves our turnouts.
So, for example, is that why you were not able to exclude the possibility that, that some of this water would go? To underground storage?
It is possible that water can go to underground storage undertaken by our contractor.
Are you aware of whether some of this water might go to, for example, the Kern Water Bank?
I cannot confirm that.
Um, are you? Aware of? Who owns the Kern Water Bank or what combination of entities own the Kern Water Bank?
No, I'm not aware.
Um. Does that mean you're also not aware about whether there have been controversies in the past over? Uh, whether a private entity? Has a majority controlling interest in the Kern Water Bank?
Objection, irrelevance.
Staying.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, I think we're pretty far afield here.
Well. I, I, if I may, I, I understand why you may think that we are far afield. But DWR has made a decision here to make statements about beneficial uses without. Apparently checking with contractors and finding out what those ultimate uses are. And. Who is in control of those may have implications for any number of the hearing issues. So I am trying to understand what the witness may understand or not about that subject.
I'm still going to sustain the objection. I think that's too far afield from where we are. And I, I frankly don't see the connection between the ownership of the Kern Water Bank and. Beneficial uses of water stored in the bank. So let's move, move on to the next line of questions.
Let's go to, uh, the end of paragraph twelve, which appears on page five. Uh, for Ms White, it, it's so, it, there's a sentence that says. A different reporting methodology that includes a different calculation could result in different results. In preparing your testimony, did you become aware of anything that would prohibit? DWR from applying, employing such a different reporting methodology?
No, we used, as stated in my testimony, uh, we. Follow the state Water Board's guidelines for our water rights reporting and the methodologies outlined. In those guidelines is what we follow.
Okay, let's go, um. I, I think a bunch of the things that I was going to go into have, have been covered in other cross acts, so. Let's go ahead to page seven, uh, paragraph sixteen. And it, there's a reference to proposed permit term forty. Uh, in exhibit DWR, uh, eleven oh one R. Uh, and it says to demonstrate that DWR will not operate the DCP prior to an order granting. In part or in, in whole or denying. Uh, the DWR's January twenty first, twenty twenty five petition for extension of time. Or as this petition may be amended. Um, did I, did I fairly summarize what is in this paragraph?
Yes.
Ms White, it was, why, my question has to do with the word amended that appears in the end. Do you cons, uh, do you? Understand that term to be broad enough? To include not just a direct amendment, but say. A withdrawal of a previous application? And a refiling of a new application? Uh, such as occurred with the two thousand nine, uh, petition.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to paragraph seventeen. The second sentence, which goes from pages seven to eight, says, it's my opinion based on my operations experience that are around. Fifteen percent. Will be sufficient to allow DWR operators to evaluate if and when operations. Will need to be modified, um. When you say will need to be modified, modified for what purpose?
That general part of my testimony is addressing, um, the. Historical maximums, um, as pursuant to the information request that we submitted. To the AHO.
And you referred to the fifteen percent figure. Have you provided supporting evidence on that figure?
No. But generally speaking, it's adequate to track volumes to, um. Give sufficient buffer around any, should the state water, so DWR have to make a change?
Thank you, um, let's move on to, uh, page eight, paragraph twenty, lines thirteen to fifteen. And you refer to. Modeling run yields, uh, for the ITP originally produced by. Uh, Mr. Singh, and then it, it, it also references the, the modeling assumptions. Uh, which I believe he also relied on, is that correct? Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding.
Um. Do you know why Mr. Singh has not been, uh, made available to present supplemental testimony?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think I have no further questions for Ms White, and I now like to go on to, um. Ms Wu, I, I hope fairly briefly and, uh, uh, I would like to. Um, uh, have Ms Mullin, um, please bring up the. The latest iteration of exhibit DWR three one one, and I think, although I don't. Have it in front of me myself, that, that, um, uh, uh, the DWR indicated that. That that one is designated as three one one E two, do I have it correct?
We can't see it in the title, but I, I believe this is the. I believe this is the, yes, errata two.
And is that in the file name? That it's identified as errata two and not just D, I'm just.
Yes, it should be, and I don't know if Ms Mullin, is there a way to hover over the top? Will that show? I don't, I don't know if it'll show us. But it's, my understanding is that the full file name is DWR zero zero three one one Wu Report. Errata two, and then we put in parentheses corrected.
Thank you. Um. If we can go to the footnote at the bottom of, uh, page one. And, um, Ms Wu, I'm gonna ask the question very similar to, uh, what I asked Ms White. Um, uh. Uh, did you write this? And if not, did this come from the legal team?
Yeah, this came from my legal team.
Okay, understood. Thank you for clarity. Um. Let's go on to the definitions, um. On page two, the one at the top of the page, lines one through five, is about beneficial use. And this sentence, uh, re, in referring to the state water project permits refers not simply to purposes. But the authorized purposes, and then there's a list, correct?
Correct.
And what's your understanding of, a, and again, this is. This is not a legal question to you, it is, it is simply for me to understand what you relied on here. Um, what's the source? Of the authorization, in, in particular, does it? Does it solely come from the language of the state water project permits, uh, referred to themselves? Or some other sources too?
Yeah, I'm referring to the water right permits granted by the state Water Board.
Okay, so i- in doing this, then am I correct in assuming that you didn't, for example, look at the applicable basin plans? To see what they indicated were the, um. The purposes pertaining beneficial use.
No, um, the purpose of this definition is. It's specific for SWP permits.
Okay, and am I correct in assuming that you didn't look at state water project contracts to see any references there about beneficial?
No, I did not.
Okay, let's go on to the definition of delta permits. Um. Uh, same page lines six through seven, which, which refers to three of the permits at issues with. Authorized diversion of water from delta channels. Um, what's your understanding of what the term delta channels means here?
It is a term that's referenced in our SWP permits. As, um, related to the source of water.
So it re, it, it relates to the source of water, um. Do the permits say anything about the authoriz, that you are aware of? Say anything about the authorization? Or not of diversion of water from delta channels? Into a conveyance that is isolated from delta flows?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by into a conveyance that is isolated from delta flow. Can you clarify?
Well. Diversion of water from, from delta channels, if you're using, say, a tunnel. Um. That. Doesn't interact with, uh. What's flowing through the delta because it is separated from it. Um. I, I'm wondering whether that is within what is an authorized diversion. Uh, in your understanding. And again, I'm not asking for a legal conclusion, I'm just wondering what, what you have made, what you may have looked at. To inform how you're using the term delta channels.
My understanding is the, the reference of delta channel is from the source of water that. Authorized to divert from, it doesn't speak to. Where we're diverting this water to, as, as related to the source of water.
And, and your assumption is that it, it is not, and it doesn't refer to the, the method of diversion either.
When it comes to the source of water as identified in our permits. I don't think it specify. The conveyance, or I don't think the source of water is related to conveyance, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go on to page three, um, lines twenty four to twenty eight, the reference to methodology. And I asked this question of, of Ms White, and so forgive me if there's a little overlap, but, but, um. Am I correct in understanding that, that you as well, um, are not aware of what guidelines, if any, existed? Um. Uh. At the end of two thousand nine?
I'm not aware of, um. A guidance document that existed, existed before two thousand nine.
Thank you, um, let's go on. To page nine. Paragraph, uh, four point four, I guess I'm looking at, at lines nineteen through twenty four. And. It refers to water used for the permitted purposes, and then it, it, it has a list of things. Um. Are the permits themselves the only source you relied on to identify? These purposes?
Yes, I rely on our permits to identify these uses.
Let's go on to page eleven. And. In line seven through nine, there's a list of, uh. In line seven through nine, there's a list of uh senior Feather River diverters. And it 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 has a list of districts that include, and then there's a bunch of of entities. Um. Are these districts that you're referring to as Feather River diverters limited to the list here? Or are there others? Besides those included in this sentence?
For my report, this this is the list. Uh, this is the limited list as I um when I refer. Um, to Feather River diverters.
Let's go on to. Page eleven, lines eighteen through twenty two. And. I and I know there's been a bunch of discussion of of this subject, which which I'll I'll try not to repeat, but but as as I understand it, the. The gist of it is that that uh that that. This provides the uh uh the methodology that that you use when uh. Diverters diversions uh out occur outside the seasons uh mentioned in it. Uh, i- it explains the circumstances under which uh. DWR uh classifies the the water supplies as. Uh, using original water diverted under SWP water rights. Um. Have I correctly characterized the uh what you're getting at at this sentence?
That's a fair summary.
Are you aware of any source of authority that would specifically require the accounting to be done in this way and not some other way?
Objection vague and ambiguous as to source of authority.
I'll allow the question to the extent. You can answer, Ms. Wu.
Yeah, I wasn't clear on what you mean by source.
Is your understanding that this is something that is required or optional? To do as you have suggested in this sentence?
It is my um for the purpose of this reported, it is. The how we account for water that's used under SWP permits.
It's how you account for it, but um it it it's fine if you don't, i- if i- i- if. If if it if the answer is simply that's the way it is, it's fine, but I'm wondering in writing it up this way. Um. Did you consider this to be a matter of obligation or not?
I don't know if that this is calling for a legal conclusion, but to the extent an obligation is. Asking for a legal conclusion, objection.
And I'll clarify, specifically not asking for a legal conclusion, just the witness's understanding of of. Uh. Um, the sentence that 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 she wrote uh here that that identifies the the accounting procedure.
I will say that this is our. Attempt to best estimate. Water diversion and use under SWP water rights.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'd like to go quickly to um a different document, uh DWR three twenty eight, the statement of qualifications. Ms. Mullen, are you able to? Bring up DWR three twenty eight, and you have it. Uh, thank you very much, as usual. Uh, I just have one, I think, well, maybe two questions about this. Um. So. Let's scroll down, if we may, to near the bottom of the page. So I I understand from from uh uh this write-up uh Ms. Wu that. That you had a previous position as associate and as assistant civil engineer for. The Sacramento area sewer district, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Are you aware of whether or not the Sacramento area sewer district has taken a position on? DWR's change petition in this proceeding?
Objection relevance?
What is the relevance, Mr. Moore?
Um, well, I consider it a potential relevance if the uh. Uh, witness has had a previous position um with a protestant in this proceeding. A subject that has come up in other contexts, uh as you may recall.
I mean, this is eight years ago. And I mean, are you asking whether the Sacramento area sewer district had a position with respect to the Delta Conveyance Project or predecessor when she was there? And she worked on that? I think you need to be more specific.
Okay, I'll ask the que- when you were there, were you aware of any position that they took on the Delta Conveyance?
No, I wasn't aware.
Okay. Um, and have you had any communication with the Sacramento area sewer district on the testimony that you're providing now?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no further questions for this one. Uh. I think I can, I'll I'll go on to Mr. Fitzhugh and. Hopefully not overlap much. I I think there's been quite a bit of discussions with people who are technically savvy than the uh. Uh, than I am, but but all all I I think have a few things. Um, and Ms. Mullen, if if you'd be kind enough to bring up the latest iteration of three twelve, I think it's. Three twelve E, is that correct?
Yes, here we have three twelve E.
Okay. Um. Going down to footnote one on page three. Uh, Mr. Fitzhugh, this question will probably sound very familiar by now, but am I correct in assuming that you did not write this sentence yourself? And if so, did the legal team put it?
Yes, that's correct. It was written by the legal team.
Let's go to page four. Um. And. Line. Nine. Refers to. Annual diversions to direct delivery to SWP table A contractor. Are you aware of any SWP contractors that are not table eight contractors?
I'm I'm actually not sure.
Okay. Um, in referring to table A here, am I correct in assuming that what you were referring to? Is the listing of uh allocation amounts per contractor that appears in table A of the state water project? Contracts?
That's right, and and this is those contractors, but it is just the contractors in the south of Delta area.
Now, um. Do you know whether? All the facilities that were envisioned for the state water project when those contracts were originally signed were actually built?
Objection relevance calls for a legal conclusion.
I don't think asking whether something was built or whether he knows whether it was is has anything to do with a legal conclusion.
Understood, Mr. Moore, but what is the relevance here?
Um. There's a number of issues that the protesters have raised having to do with the um uh. Public interest issues associated with the project, the impacts associated with the project that have to do with um. Oversubscription problems within uh the state water project. Um, so it's important to understand whether the um uh accounting has um uh. Ha- has fully uh considered and incorporated those issues. So it it will relate to things that I think will be directly relevant to what the protesters will be raising about hearing issues in their case.
So I'm just trying to understand, Mr. Moore, your question about whether or not the contracts were executed at a time that contemplated the construction of something like the delta. The Delta Conveyance Project is relevant to the accounting? I'm ju- I'm just not following.
Well, there's a reliance on table A. And there was testimony yesterday, I think it may have come from Ms. Wu as well, though I would have to go back and check. That had to do with um, uh there were assumptions made at some times uh that um. That assumed the full amounts in table A and other times not. Uh, so we're we're having a very compressed period on very short notice with a lot of changes. Uh, to consider this testimony. Uh, this witness has referred to to table A of the contracts, and so I am hoping for a little leeway. To a- a- ask what I think is a pretty straightforward question, which frankly, I think, you know. Um, most people here know the answer to about whether those originally proposed facilities were actually all built.
Well, and I'm just trying to understand where you're going. So my understanding is where you're going is to explore whether based on Mr. Fitzhugh's understanding. The contracts um. For table A water could be fulfilled by use of the Delta Conveyance Project? Is that the question ultimately?
Well, it 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 goes, i- it goes to. The whether the use is an issue or beneficial or not, and that relates to several of the hearing issues.
I'm still not following. I'm sorry, Mr. Moore. A- and I know it is a basic question, but I re- uh if you ask it, and I don't understand why you're asking it, that's not going to get us anywhere either, so I'd like to get to the. If if you want to ask the question, which is. W- what I guess, what? What is your understanding of the relationship? Why are you asking about? I understand that table A was used as a as a um with respect to demand essentially in the modeling. And so you're trying to understand whether the correct appropriate demand numbers were used in the modeling, is that? Is that it, or am I off?
Um, close. Let me a- actually ask a a a very, i- it's going to be a very different question that won't be uh about. Table A. Um, Mr. Fitzhugh, uh uh, and I don't have all my notes here, so I I'm not going to refer to a specific part of the testimony, but. Uh, do I recall correctly that there was some discussion about? Uh, the the differences between modeling results and the actual historical record? And a- a- am I, uh, do I recall correctly that 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 you indicated that uh? The the best use of of the the modeling is for comparative purposes?
Yes. I made both those, we discussed both those points, yes.
And if I recall correctly, you did not. Find it particularly surprising that there would be differences between the uh the modeled results and what was uh. Uh, wh- what the historical record of of for those years uh would have been or may have been. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We're not, CalcSim is not simulating historical operations in the past that's using. Assumptions that correspond to how the operations work today, so I'm not surprised that they wouldn't be the same.
Thank you. Now, I had in my notes and um uh because my handwriting is terrible, I I uh I don't even see who asked the question, but. Um. You were asked about why there may be uh. Uh, whether he had any views about why there 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 might be such a disparity between the modeled and historic results? And one thing I believe that you mentioned is that it might have something to do with demand, is that correct?
Yes, I think that's possible.
Um. Did you conduct any analysis of demand yourself in preparing this report?
No, I did not.
And are you aware of e- any economic analysis of the subject of uh on the subject of demand that? That um that. Any of DWR's witnesses have uh provided in testimony?
Objection relevance.
Overruled.
I don't know about any econom- economic analysis related to specifically to demand assumptions, no.
Okay, thank you. Um, now I want to go, and I'm, we're nearing the end here, um. Relating the subject of uh results. And I I I'm gonna just, i- i- there's a lot to be said about each one. I I'm just gonna a- ask some some pretty basic things about. The how how they intersect with with the model. Um. So. The. The results in table two indicate. A reduction in average annual incremental SWP exports with the DCP from. Four hundred seventy two thousand acre feet to three hundred nineteen acre feet, is that correct?
Uh, if we could sc- scroll down to the table, but I think.
Yeah, I I'm on page five uh of of uh exhibit. Three twelve E and uh lines eighteen to twenty.
Right, so yes, the calculated yield went from four seventy two to three nineteen.
And there's a figure also for a a uh a a downward adjustment in the updated baseline without the uh. The DCP, is that correct?
Are you referring to table three?
No, I'm I'm referring to the results that are.
Oh, I I see, the twenty four twenty eight versus the twenty two sixty five. Maybe just ask your question again, please.
So it it uh the last line here says the the uh in line nineteen to twenty, the analysis indicates that applying the limits reduces SWP exports under the updated baseline without the DCP from two point four three million acre feet to two point two seven million acre feet. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. And then in the next part of the text introduces tables uh uh three and four and you refer to the application of the DCP ITP model, correct?
Yes.
And do I remember correctly that the the DCP ITP model incorporates information from the uh what what previous testimony referred to as the voluntary agreements?
Yes, and both of these models, the updated baseline and the DCP ITP model have voluntary agreements in them.
Do I remember correctly from previous testimony that the DCP ITP model did not draw conclusions as to the um application of temporary use uh of TUCPs um over the the years looked at?
Right, there are no TUCPs in these either of these two models.
Okay. And do I remember correctly that the DCP ITP model does not look at what the outcome would be if a stricter requirement of flow uh i- i- if stricter requirements for Delta flows were 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 adopted in the uh pending water quality proceedings.
Uh can you just give an example of what you're talking about?
Well, as I understand it, in the pending proceedings on proposed changes in the Bay Delta water qualities.
So other than the voluntary.
One proposal for voluntary agreements, there's another uh proposal uh for a rig regulatory uh requirement based on, I think, fifty five percent. Uh a fifty five percent uh unimpaired flow objective.
No, it does not include that.
Okay. If the fifty five percent unimpaired flow objective were adopted instead, is it possible that there would then be a different number than the three nineteen TAF that that you've indicated?
Objection calls for speculation.
Well, I guess all I need to ask is I I think you've answered already, but you've confirmed that you haven't you haven't studied what the outcome would be if if the fifty five percent unimpaired flow objective reuse instead. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have not looked at that.
Okay. And did I also understand correctly that that in identifying the results that are that are set out in in section three of the the report, um you didn't make a further attempt to 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 look at the actual historical record over those years as distinct from what the modeled outcomes would be?
Uh no, I have not looked at that. Um I do want to just emphasize that and this has been emphasized in some earlier testimony by others and me as well that you know, that using calcium in a predictive mode or using it to simulate absolute values in terms of exports reversing or some other role is not the best use of the model, and we recommend that it should only be used for comparative analysis. So I just want to make that statement. The reason is that if you had some bias in the absolute results in terms of exports, then it would be in both of these models. So you might see a change in the, say, the twenty four twenty eight and twenty eight hundred, but the difference, the those that bias would usually mostly cancel out, and then you wouldn't see an effect on the on the yield number. So just want to emphasize that the comparative method for using the model is the most appropriate.
Thank you. And I um I I think I just have a final couple of questions, and they're they're really for all of all of the witnesses. Am I correct in assuming that none of you reviewed uh as uh in preparing your testimony the um two thousand six cease and desist order issued to DWR relating to the subject of com- compliance with the sixteen forty one?
I am aware of it. I did. I have not reviewed it.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Oh, I have one other question that I I think I forgot to ask earlier and that that I'm not sure has been covered, whi- which relate to the figures for maximum uses. Now I realize that that you're answering the questions that are posed by but the four questions that that the hearing officer posed. But um did did I un- understand correctly that in providing your answers you did not take the step of tracing the ultimate beneficial uses that the uh individual state water contractors might have made a a use of their water after DWR had conveyed it to those contracts?
Objection asked and answered.
I'll allow it just for clarification.
Yes, uh I as I mentioned earlier, we consider water delivered when they leave our turnouts for the purpose of this report.
Now, while you not while you didn't take a specific look at it, am I correct in assuming that some of those uses would have been agricultural uses?
What do you mean by some of those?
Well, I think that there was I think that there was testimony yesterday, I think from you, Ms. Wu, that that you looked at the the contractors involved and what what their basic purposes, so some would be for M and I, some would be for agriculture and so forth. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And am I correct in assuming that you didn't that none of you you in preparing your testimony made an attempt to distinguish between say annual agricultural uses for annual crops and ones that that would require multiple years for for beneficial use, such as planting trees?
Objection relevance?
Uh the relevance has to do with the the use of annual maximum figures.
It's a vague and ambiguous question as to what water use for. I I'm not following the hypothetical. It seems incomplete.
I think that so, Mr. Moore, can you ask the just ask the question again to make sure I understand it? You're asking whether, well, please, if you can repeat the question.
If some of the water from the year of maximum use goes to say almond trees or pistachio trees, do you think it would be enough only to provide water for one year?
Objection relevance incomplete hypothetical.
I think, Mr. Moore, I don't think this is a productive line of questioning. So I'd ask you to move on from this. I don't think the accounting question, this for the accountants, that was not the the I don't see the relevance of this question to the accounting that was conducted.
I think there is a connection, but it's nothing that we can't address in in the proceedings to follow. So uh with that, I'm I'm willing to conclude my testimony and appreciate the time.
Your questions. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you to the witnesses. I think now is a good time for a break. And then, as I understand, when we come back, I will uh look to Ms. Meserve for questions. So I will see you. Let's make it ten fifty five. Thank you. look to Ms. Meserve for questions. So I will see you. Let's make it ten fifty-five. Thank you. All right, welcome back. Uh, is our court reporter ready for us to go back on the record? I may be jumping the gun. If our court reporter is with us, uh, you'll have to come off mute and let me know if you're ready for us to go back on the record. All right then, I'll wait a few moments.
Hello there, uh, hi there, yes, ready to go. My apologies.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Uh, and then with that, do we have our witnesses back? And Ms. Carol is there? Excellent. And then I believe I will look for Ms. Meserve, and I see her here. So with that, Ms. Meserve, I will let you ask your questions of these witnesses.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Oops, Meserve for Contra Costa County at all. Um, just have a few questions and I'll give an update on Mr. Ruiz. I think he's getting wrapped up with his other um court hearing and it may be that he would begin after lunch, though I'm not sure. I imagine I'll get a second from him shortly.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Um, so let's see. Uh, first, I had a couple of questions for Ms. Wu. Um, if we could go please Ms. Mullen to her report, which is um three eleven E, I believe, and page thirteen. And I guess it's going to be actually page fifteen PDF. And under the questions I had were under the item two there. Yes, perfect. Thank you. Um. And my question was Ms. Wu that this portion of the report refers to um daily data from two thousand five for the bank's pumping plant. And it references um DWR three sixteen on line sixteen. Do you see that, Ms. Wu?
Yes, I see that.
And when you use the term data, what what do you mean by that?
I'm referring referring to the daily pumping amount at banks pumping plant.
And can you describe the source of the data?
You mean how it's measured?
Oops, yes, how the data in two thousand five was measured.
We have meters at Banks Pumping Plant that that measures the volume for Banks Pumping Plant.
And was there a meter in place in two thousand five?
I believe so.
So is it your testimony that um DWR three sixteen is output from a meter?
It is um based on output from the meter. But my understanding is if correction needs to be made because maybe for whatever reasons, then corrections be made.
Okay, and you're aware that um least for certain diversions, metering was required um in two, beginning in two thousand and ten.
You're referring to Senate Bill eighty-eight?
Correct, yes.
Yes, I'm aware.
And so do you know what type of metering device was used in two thousand five to generate the data in uh DWR three sixteen?
Not the specific.
Um, and I did um upload an exhibit uh this morning, Ms. Mullen um that is, I put CCC at the beginning of it and it
We have it, I believe.
Okay, yeah.
I think we can pull it up.
Okay, thank you. It's a progress report by Permatie for the year twenty sixteen. Oops, yeah, not that one. Um, sorry, there's one I uploaded just there. Thank you so much. Um, and Ms. Wu, so you recognize the progress report form that gets submitted to the Water Board?
I recognize this form.
Um, and when I looked on the E-RIM database, which was where I pulled this form up, the um these progress reports begin in in two thousand and ten. Um, does that sound correct?
Yeah, that sounds correct. I believe that's when RIPS was launched.
And then um, let's see. So if we could go please to PDF page ten, Ms. Mullen. And this refers Ms. Wu to a measurement ID number at Banks Pumping Plant. And if you see the line there where it says M seven, it says approximate date of installation two thousand and six. So my question is um, again, and maybe you don't know the answer. If if we're focused on two thousand five as the year when the direct diversion um to storage was the highest prior to two thousand nine, how how would that have been measured at Banks?
I'm not sure, just by reading this report, not sure if this is a new device or a replacement or but I, in my understanding, there was meters that measure pumping amount in two thousand five.
Okay, um, are you aware, Ms. Wu, that out of the progress reports by licensee starting in two thousand ten that this one here for the year twenty sixteen is the first one to reference a meter at all at Banks Pumping Plant?
Objection relevance outside of the scope.
I'll allow the question.
Can you repeat your question?
Sure, I was just trying to track down Ms. Wu what the meter might have been in two thousand and five. And this was the first reference to a meter I could find. So my question is whether you are aware that this is the first reference to a meter in the reports that are available starting in two thousand and ten.
I would look, I don't know if this is a requirement in for the two thousand five report. But I'll start there. Uh, there may be also ways for us to find out what the specific meter was in two thousand five.
So is it your testimony then that you think there there was a meter in two thousand five and it would have been referenced in the two thousand five progress report?
Objection compound mistate's testimony.
Can you just break that down, Ms. Meserve?
Sure, I'm I'm simply trying to, there was a reference to to data in the Ms. Wu's report. And then I'm trying to find the source of the data, which I did look for. And this is the closest thing I could find, which begins the next year.
No, I understand, Ms. Meserve. I think your question did in fact have two parts, though, so I think that we can just go through one by one.
Okay, um. So if I was to try to find what type of meter measured was the source of the data in DWR three sixteen, are you pointing me to the um two thousand five progress report followed by DWR?
That's where I would go look for information, but haven't thoroughly revealed two thousand five. I cannot guarantee if find something there.
Well, then I guess my question still is, what's the source of the data in DWR three sixteen?
I it's, it would be a flow meter. Uh, but I don't know the specific model of that.
Was that something, was DWR three sixteen provided to you by somebody else?
No, we rely on operations report.
So is DWR three sixteen is not an estimate then?
It is not an estimate, it's a measurement.
But you don't know what 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 the measuring device was?
I don't know the specific model, but I know that it's a meter.
Okay. Do do we have the um use my ignorance on this, but the the two thousand five progress report, is that an exhibit here in our hearing yet?
It's in the administrative record. I don't think we have it identified as an exhibit, but we could pull it up.
Okay, could could we do that just for a minute?
Give us a moment. So the two thousand five progress report.
For the, I think it would be A one four four three three.
And which permit is that, do you know? Oh, here we go, we already have it.
Yeah. Are you familiar with this document, Ms. Wu?
I I'm familiar with the progress reports in general. I did not prepare this report.
And then, let's see. One moment. If we scroll down uh, question court. Okay, if we go to page nine, Ms. Mullen. Is this at the top of the page, Ms. Wu, what you would consider to be a measuring device?
What we're looking at um, under beneficial uses of water?
Yeah, oh, actually, I'm sorry, if we go to um page ten. If we go to page ten, we see another reference to If we go to page ten, we see another reference to the uh flow meter. However, it still says approximate date of installation, the beginning of two thousand six. I guess I'm wondering still, what was the measuring device for two thousand five?
Objection, asked answered.
I think we've been through that, Ms. M reserve.
All right, um, I was, is this the one I pulled up for two thousand five had fourteen pages? Is that, that's not what we're looking at here?
It's maybe for one of the other permits?
It was the fourteen forty three, but um, I'll 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 have to come back to this, but I was just searching for the data, that's all. Um, let's see. We'll move on. Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Mullen. Um, then um, if we could go back to Ms. Wu's testimony at three thou- three eleven E, um, at the top of page two. It discusses the beneficial use definition that we've been over a little bit.
And Ms. M reserve, just to clarify for the record, it's E two?
It would be PDF page four, and then the beneficial use definition at the top. There we go. Thank you. Um, and Ms. Wu, here we see that it um mentions the water applied to authorized purpose under permit. Um, we see that language in lines one through five.
Yes.
And it references the calculation of beneficial use includes the amount of direct diversion plus storage withdrawals. You see that part?
Yes.
Um, but DWR does not track the amount of water that was directly diverted or withdrawn from storage and that was thereafter used for irrigation, for example, in a given year, does it?
We do track when it's directly diverted for irrigation and then when it's redrawn from our storage, if the release, if the store water is for irrigation. We do track it.
Do you break out the amount used for irrigation in your tracking?
We don't track our the amount of beneficial use per different category of uses. It sometimes it can be multi- multipurpose uses.
Okay, and so it'd be the same thing, for instance, for municipal and um industrial purposes is not separately tracked, just like the irrigation is not.
That's correct.
And some of this water um is used um is delivered to contractors who then re-divert that water into underground storage, right?
It, that could be the case.
And have for purposes of the report that we're looking at, um, did you assume that any water that DWR directly diverted or withdrew from storage was beneficially used without actually compiling the data on how the water was thereafter put to beneficial use?
For purpose of this report, we I don't track the water after it leaves our turnout.
And DWR does not have an underground storage supplement for the permits that are at issue in this change petition proceeding, does it?
Can you clarify what's underground source supplement means?
Um, the underground storage supplement, um, by that I mean a rough um, a permit that allows the water to be um stored underground.
Calls for legal conclusion, outside the scope, relevance.
Overruled and the objection noted with respect to legal conclusion.
Underground storage is not identified in our permits.
Okay. Um, and then uh we could uh put this exhibit uh down, thanks. Um, and then is it correct that the currently proposed operation plan, Ms. Wu, is to primarily use the new DCP diversions in the wetter months?
Objection, outside outside the scope. Relevance.
Where are, where are we going, Ms. M reserve?
Um, well, um, my question is around the need for the the likely increase of use of underground storage because of the time of year of diversion that's uh proposed um in this change petition.
All right, I'll allow the question. If you can answer, Ms. Wu, do you need the question again, Ms. Wu?
I will defer to Ms. White for operations of DCP.
Got it.
Shall I ask it again?
Yes, please.
Sure, um, is it correct, Ms. White, that the proposed operation plan for the new DCP diversions would primarily divert water in the wetter months?
That is likely the primary time we would be diverting through the North Delta intakes.
And would these be the same months in which there is generally less demand for irrigation from agriculture?
Objection calls for speculation.
Overruled.
Can you repeat your question, please?
Would these wetter months typically be the same months when there is less irrigation demand from the agricultural contractors of DWR?
In general, um, there is lower demands during the winter months for agriculture purposes, just in general.
So um, would it be reasonable to assume, Ms. White, that the diversions made possible with the DCP would result in more need for underground storage?
Calls for speculation.
Overrule.
I don't know.
And Ms. White, you're not aware of a request for a permit to divert to underground storage being part of this um change petition, are you?
I'm not aware.
Um, then Ms. White, uh, just following up on um some cross exam questions that Mr. Cho asked you about operation of the project to match the permit limits. Um, you mentioned, I believe, that DWR is tracking its operations to be compliant with the water storage and diversion and other levels that have been reached as of the end of two thousand nine. Is that correct?
I'd have to, I I'd say what I testified to yesterday is that um we are tracking our operations on a daily basis to to ensure um that we are within the maximum, historical maximums that were provided by the supplemental information request.
And how long has DWR been tracking compliance with those levels?
We've been tracking um this year.
So can you be more specific about when you began, when DWR began tracking compliance with the levels?
I don't have the specific date that we began tracking.
Was it prior to the time that uh this testimony was submitted in May of uh twenty twenty five?
Objection, relevance outside of the scope.
Where are we going, Ms. M reserve?
Well, the the witnesses have testified that they are in compliance with their permit terms and including referencing the maximum levels of use that were disclosed in the May twenty seventh testimony, so I'm just trying to find out how long that has been occurring. The compliance, the tracking compliance that was referenced.
All right, I'll 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 allow this question.
As I mentioned, this year we've been tracking um. Prior to that, we submitted a time extension petition in two thousand nine and it was withdrawn in the fall of twenty twenty four. And since that with the, as mentioned, that we did submit another time extension petition earlier this year, twenty twenty five. And so we've been tracking um our operations for this year.
And so did DWR know the levels it was trying to track compliance with? How lo- how long did DWR know the levels it was trying to track compliance with before May twenty seventh?
Objection, relevance.
I think I'm about done with this line of questioning, Ms. M reserve, so if we can move on. Thank you.
Yes. Um, Ms. Wu, I just had a couple follow-up questions for you as well. Um, if we could, Ms. Mullen, pull up the Ms. Wu's report, the um DWR three eleven E two, I believe. And it is PDF page thirteen. And down in the, yeah, the section that was labeled Feather River Direct Diversion, thank you. Um, and the specific passage I'm looking at, Ms. Wu, has to do with the lines seventeen through twenty two. And um, my question is, in recalling your discussion with Mr. Schutz yesterday, I thought I heard you reference an exhibit in which you show the data that supports how DWR accounts for the allocation of water rights to underlying Feather River diverters and DWR's rights in the years that show maximum use. And I was wondering if you could point us toward that exhibit.
Sorry, I don't recall an exhibit that I referenced. Can you be more specific about it? My memory is refreshing.
Sure, um. Yeah, well, I don't know which exhibit it is. I just thought you mentioned that um there is some kind of exhibit that shows this accounting between the Feather River diverters and DWR water rights. And so if if I misheard, then um perhaps there is not such an exhibit as, is that your understanding?
I don't remember discussing an exhibit with Mr. Schutz, but did submit two exhibits that contain information for Feather River use in two thousand five and two thousand seven. And that's exhibit three s- three one seven and three twenty.
Um, and then is there a tool or calculator that DWR uses to calculate the natural flow in the Feather River for purposes of meeting the water rights of Feather River diverters?
We have estimates of. Are you, sorry, did you ask about the info?
Yeah, the natural flow, yes.
We have estimates of the inflow coming into Lake Orville.
Is is there a tool that DWR uses to calculate those estimates?
It's a operations report which reports that metric. And which is, excuse me, which is also available on CDEC.
CDEC, okay. And does that have a, would that be usable by the public to try to calculate the amounts that um DWR has reported as being the natural flow um necessary for meeting those Feather River diverters?
That's the input we use, and I believe I have a footnote in my report that referenced that CDEC link.
Okay.
It's a footnote eight.
Thank you. On page fourteen, which may be PDF page sixteen. Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Wu. Um, and so there's not some other tool that you use besides CDEC? Is is that correct?
The inflow data is available on CDEC, uh, which, as I testified, yeah, it contains preliminary data. Um, and for my calculations, I rely on official operations reports, which is QA QC data.
And does that, does that provide the water demand of the Feather River diverters or the water rights of the Feather River diverters?
We have other reports that contain delivery information.
Can you point me to those other reports?
It's a report that, uh, I'm not sure if they're publicly available, but you can request that.
So it would be, can you give me an idea of what the name of the report may be so that we could follow up on that?
If I could, if you don't mind, if I could just chime in here as well. Um, I did reference the website that our Delta, Delta Operations and Delta Status website does have a lot of operational reports that are posted and that include daily operations and weekly. and that include daily operations and weekly operations. And there are some reports that include thirty days. There's contact information on there for additional information requests.
Okay. And but that one, there's a limitation in the number of years that are available in on that website, though, isn't that correct, Ms. White? That may not cover the years that are reported in this supplemental testimony as being the years of maximum storage or use, for instance.
Those reports can be requested. We, we can't post them on our report. They were previously provided on the website, as I think Ms. Wu testified to yesterday. And there's contact information on that website.
Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. That's all the questions I have. Your Officer Kinsey, I am not aware of whether Mr. Ruiz is available yet.
Understood. Thank you, Ms. Merser. Let's see. I mean, it's eleven thirty. We could take an early lunch. I believe the other option here is I think the Placer County Water Agency EID attorneys indicated they possibly would like to ask questions. So this might be a good time. I see Mr. Donlin has his hand raised. If we can elevate Mr. Donlin, please. There we are. Good morning, Mr. Donlin. I can't hear you. You're not on mute, but I can't hear you. This could be tricky. We still can't hear you.
Hearing Officer Kinsey, I'm not sure if Mr. Reese still is able to raise his hand, but he did have it up a moment ago.
Oh. Well, let's bring up Mr. Reese who's here now. And we'll start with that. And Mr. Donlin, maybe you can troubleshoot on the side if, if the hearing team can elevate Mr. Reese as well. And we'll go to Mr. Reese first.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you for indulging me. I don't have a lot of questions. But I have, I just caught the tail end of Ms. Merser's. I have a feeling some of the questions have been asked this morning. I can try to get through it, or I could confer with, with her and even Mr. Moore to see if I'm not plowing any ground that's been repeated multiple times.
Right, understood. I guess I would be inclined and then Mr. Donlin, I assume you're still, you're still not on, we still can't hear you. And I know that's frustrating. The technology is frustrating sometimes. Sometimes logging in and out works. I don't know if it'll work here. But I guess what I would be inclined to do is to let you go ahead and confer, Mr. Reese, if that will help shorten things up. And then we just take an early lunch and come back at twelve thirty. Are there any objections to that approach, Ms. Carol?
No objection. Just wanted to check on the timing for DTEC. And if anyone knows if Ms. Desjardins will be available after lunch. And then also just wanted to circle back. I also had the state water contractors on my list with potential questions.
Yes, I do too. I assumed they'd want to go at the end, but if, if state water contractors, if you don't, you can let me know. But that's how I had envisioned this.
I was able, oh, sorry, I was able to connect with Mr. Donlin and he says, and he can shake his head and confirm that he does not plan on cross examining at this point in time.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I don't know that we have a representative from DTEC or Ms. Desjardins. I was planning to turn to them at some point after lunch. Oh, it looks like we have Mr. Gukaki. So if we can elevate Mr. Gukaki to panelist status, he can give us an update. It's, it's the afternoon on the East Coast.
Yes, good.
Good morning.
Good morning. William Ngudak appearing for the DTEC parties. We only have about thirty minutes of questioning, so I'm happy to take an early break and come back.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and do that. Let's take an early break. We will return at twelve thirty and pick up with Mr. Reese. And then I will turn to DTEC, Ms. Desjardins, if she's able to join us. Hopefully she is. And then state water contractors. That's my intent. Are there any questions before we break? All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you at twelve thirty. Thank you.
Welcome back. It's 12:31. I will look to our court reporter. Are you ready for us to go back on the record? Do I have the court reporter in the room is another question? Yes, I do.
Yes, here and ready to go.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And with that, I see Mr. Reese, I see Ms. Carol, and then we just need our three witnesses, please. And we're looking to just make sure we have Ms. White, if you can. Come on camera.
She's trying to turn it on, but it's not connecting.
Operating noted. There we are. Wonderful. I think with that, I will turn this over to you, Mr. Reese, for your questions.
Thank you. I did confer with a couple of other questioners from earlier today, and so my questions are going to be pretty short. Most things have been covered at this point. So I'm going to start by following up on a couple of questions that Miss Mazzur had. Miss Wu, with respect to there was some cross-examination and some testimony regarding DWR 316 just before lunch with regard to the flow meter. You recall that?
Yes, I recall that.
Okay, I just want to be clear in terms of the data for that flow meter. Where would, I believe you testified that you're not aware of where that data is. I just want to be clear. Is that your testimony?
No, the data that I rely on comes from official DWR operations.
Okay. Is there a flow meter data, specific flow meter data? That you are aware of?
Objection, vague and ambiguous as to what year. I know we discussed this with Miss Mazzur, Hearing Officer Kinsey, but she was referring to a 2016 report. Is this in reference to Miss Wu's report and the data provided by Miss Wu?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm following up on that is in respect to that, to Miss Wu's report. So I'm asking, are you aware of where we would find any specific flow meter data? That's referenced in DWR 316.
Besides the data that we submitted?
Yes.
I believe it's also on CDEC.
Okay.
And I would just clarify that when I when I mentioned meter earlier, I was more in general referring to a measuring device and I will have to confirm with our operations office what specific type of device that would be.
Okay, and then when you do that, you'll provide that to your counsel to share with the rest of us?
I'll leave that to counsel.
Very good. With respect to following up on a couple of questions that were asked regarding beneficial use, and I know we've been through this, so I'm going to try to be pretty specific. You said in response to questions related to tracking, actually tracking of water, irrigation water, for example, once it's diverted or re-diverted from the South Delta facilities or MNI water, you said that for purposes of this report, you don't track the actual use of the water. Is that correct?
I said that we didn't try, we didn't have like amount associated with each specific use.
Okay, when you said for purposes of this report, does that mean something? I mean, does DWR, do you track the actual specific use for, you know, for irrigation or for MNI outside of the context of this report? You do it for any other purpose is what I'm saying, asking.
I'm not aware of other reports that track specifically at the amount for one single purpose.
Okay. And when you say one single purpose, do you mean a specific category of use such as irrigation?
Correct, that can be an example.
Okay, or MNI, right?
Yes.
If hypothetically, if you were asked to track or conduct analysis, an analysis of how, for example, the 4,042,851 acre feet of of water per your testimony at page 13, line 14 was actually used. Do you know how you would go about doing that? For irrigation purposes?
To provide an estimate, I would start by looking at the deliveries to contractors whose primary purpose is irrigation.
That would be to provide an estimate. That's where you start. What else would you do?
To look at the amount of deliveries to them.
You would look at the amount of deliveries to them? Is there anything else that you would do to find the actual, to try to track the actual use for irrigation, use of the water for irrigation purposes?
Not that I can think of now.
And would that be the same for MNI?
Yes, that would be the same approach.
You just also just to follow up, and I have you on my list, so there were some questions regarding the use of the water that you've identified as part of the maximum diversion amount or maximum in response to the HOA's requests with respect to water that might be banked in a water bank. Do you remember that line of questioning?
Yes, I do.
And I believe you indicated that some of the SWP water may have been banked or may be banked. Is that, is that a fair assessment of your testimony?
Yes, that's fair.
How, well, I don't know if this was asked or not. Do you know how much of that water was banked?
No, I don't know.
Okay, and do you know how we would find out how much of that water was banked?
I don't know.
Do you know who would know that within DWR?
We have a unit that administer water supply contracts.
Okay, that's where you believe that information might be available from that unit?
Possibly.
And if, as you testified, if it's some of the water, the SWP water was banked, isn't it possible that if it was banked, it would be used in a later year? As opposed to the year that it was banked?
I suppose it's possible.
Was that at all factored into your analysis for this report?
No, as I testified, for purpose of this report, I consider water delivered once it leaves our turnouts.
Okay, thank you. And this is a follow-up for Mrs., for Ms. White. And this has been plowed ground, but I just need to clarify for, for the record in terms of tracking maximum compliance levels. In terms of when DWR has started doing that, and you testified that, I believe you testified that you weren't sure. I just want to be clear. Who would know, or how would we find out when DWR started tracking maximum compliance levels?
Objection, Miss Tate's testimony.
What I testified to is that we are, we began tracking this year. I just don't have a specific date on when that tracking began.
Okay. So just for clarity of the record, but prior to this year, it's your testimony that their DWR was not tracking. Is that correct?
Well, we correct. We track our daily operations, but correct.
For Miss Wu, just a couple of questions on the choice with regard to the guidelines provided by the State Board for the development schedule. On page three of your report, I'm not sure what PDF it is, but page three, line 25, you make reference to the guidance, the State Board guidance in terms of the development period, and then referring over to, refer to DWR 313. So if we could just pull up DWR 313, page two. There in the middle, under what is the time period for determining, if you could scroll down a little bit. It says there in the middle of the page that the division, the division usually uses either the initial permits development schedule or the most recent development schedule authorized by the most recent time extension. It's my understanding that for purposes of this report, for the development schedule, you used more than one development schedule. Is that right?
The development schedule is through end of 2009.
Okay, but so you use all the way from up to two, well, are you aware of there being more than one development schedule for these permits?
Yes, I'm aware that it's been extended in the past.
Okay. But the results that you provide are, you cover the more than just the one development schedule, isn't that right?
That's right.
And so why did you use more than one?
It covers both development schedules.
Okay, and I'm asking you, and I realize that this says the vision usually uses the initial development schedule or the most recent. I'm asking you if you know why you used, instead of using one of the other, you used both of them.
The way I interpret this is that interpret the most recent development schedule is through the most recent development deadlines.
So you did that just based on your interpretation of that language?
Objection, Miss Tate's testimony, this is, information was being provided specifically by the AHO and specifically requested for pre-2009 information.
Will you, Mr. Reese, will you state your question again, please?
Yeah, I could try to do a better job with. My question is that based on this guidance document and DWR 313, it appears that the vision is usually, it says usually going to use either the initial permit development period, which was, I understand, prior to 1990, or the most recent development schedule, which I believe then went from essentially 1991 to 2009. And I realized the HOA's request was for pre-2009, but I'm, it still seems that there's a choice made to use both of those development schedules in terms of coming up with the maximum amounts versus using the earlier development schedule or the later development schedule. And so my question is, was there a choice to use both instead of one, and if so, why?
I see. So I think, Ms. Wu, the question for you is whether you considered using the earlier original development schedule in responding to the request. I'll phrase it that way, and then, Mr. Reese, you can follow up.
But I would still object to that question because this is not a time extension. Sorry, this is not the time extension, nor is this a licensing proceeding. And the information that was provided was in direct response to the AHO's request, which was for pre-2009 information. So this question is relevant because it's outside the scope of what the AHO directly asks for, and it calls for a legal conclusion.
I think that was testimony.
Well, let me, let me think this through a minute because I'm trying, now I'm trying to think about, I mean, the the question from the AHO, the request for information was, I believe, maximum historical use prior to 2009. So implicitly, I think the AHO's I was personally not aware of this document before now, well, before making the request for information. But what are you trying to get at, Mr. Reese? I'm trying to figure out.
I'm just trying to, I'm asking, I mean, I wasn't aware of the document either until the other day, and it says that you use one of the two development schedules, and I'm wondering if if they would have used the initial development schedule, if that would have affected her findings or results.
I think let's move on from, noted, but let's move on from that because I do think Ms. Morris is correct, that it's not within the scope of what the AHO asked for.
All right. All right, let me just check my notes. Most, everything else has been. Actually, I don't have any, any further questions.
Hearing Officer Kinsey?
Yes.
Just if I might add in, I believe the witness testified that she followed this guidance that Mr. Ruiz could have asked to put up on the screen. So I think the question is really around whether the guidance was followed or not, which seems to be within the scope of the testimony that was provided.
I guess I just don't see with this, we know with the DWR provided, and Ms. Wu provided the the years in which these maximum levels were reached. So I don't understand the purpose of probing further, I mean, it's self-evident that that the maximum year as analyzed by DWR was after 1990, well, for some of the values.
Well, there were values for storage in 1978, so there were two different development periods used, which appears to be contrary to the guidance that she says she followed. So
I think this is a legal dispute because actually that, what your interpretation had never occurred to me until now. So this sounds like a legal dispute and something that's appropriate for briefing. So let's deal with it that way.
That's fine. That's why I was just asking her, her, her understanding of why she did it, but that's, that's fine. As I said, I don't have any further questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reese. With that, next on my list, I will look to Mr. Gukaki. It looks like you're here, and you are welcome to ask your questions of these witnesses.
Thank you, Hearing Officer. Good afternoon, Hearing Officer. Good afternoon, Ms. White, Ms. Wu, Mr. Fitzhugh. My name is William Muthake, and I represent a coalition of Delta tribes and environmental justice groups, and I just have a few questions for you today. Firstly, starting with Ms. Wu, and Ms. Mullin, if you could please pull up 311 at PDF page four, around at the beginning of that document. page four around at the beginning of that document.
Sorry, do we want three eleven? Uh errata too. I'm so sorry for all the confusion with the tables and the numbering, but
Yes, well, let's please, I assume you want the the latest and greatest, if you will. So let's uh please go to the is it the, yes, three eleven E two corrected.
Thank you.
And I believe that's what we have.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Mullin. And Ms. Wu, I just have a few questions following up on the colloquy earlier today with Mr. Moore. And so here at the top of the page, you have the definition of beneficial use as water applied to an authorized purpose under water rights permit for this SWP permits. The authorized purposes include irrigation, domestic, municipal, industrial, salinity control, recreational, fish and wildlife, and incidental power generally, correct?
Correct.
And so is this definition of beneficial use? Um the definition you're using to answer the hearing officer's fourth information request, which requests the maximum volume of water beneficially used under each water right permit during any water year before December thirty first, two thousand nine?
Can you repeat your question, please?
My, my question is, is this the definition you use to answer uh the information request by the hearing officer specifically uh request number four?
Yes, that this is, these are the authorized purposes that identified in our permits. Um the calculation does not account for incidental powers we of um as provided here in my definition.
So just when you say authorized permits, can you just clarify for the record? So exactly, you, where, where are you drawing this definition from?
These uses are identified in our water right permits.
And that's the wording specifically set out in those permits?
I believe so. The under purpose of use.
Right. And are you aware if DWR has introduced those permits into evidence? Um setting forth those specific permitted beneficial uses?
I'm not aware.
Would you, and so I think you had made a a point there, but were you able to point, point me to where in the permit this definition is outlined? I think you had stated four.
It's under purpose of use.
Thank you. And so
And just for your, just to make the record clear, and I'm not sure if there's confusion or not, but the AHO exhibits do include uh the four permits at issue in this proceeding.
Thank you, Hearing Officer. And so is it DWR's position that the environmental flows, for instance, leaving water in stream for fishing, wildlife habitat are permitted beneficial uses?
Objection, calls for a legal conclusion.
Uh noted, to the extent you can answer your name, Ms. Wu.
Fish and wildlife is part of the authorized used under SWP permits.
As so as an authorized use, what is DWR's basis for this opinion?
Objection, calls for a legal conclusion.
I- if you have an opinion, Ms. Wu, you can express it.
I don't have an opinion. It's just what's identified in our permits.
Hmm. And so are you aware if DWR has ever petitioned for an in-stream flow dedication for any portion of its state water project permits under California Water Code, section seventeen oh seven?
I don't think we have officially petitioned. We've contemplated.
Oh, that's interesting. Thank you. Now, I just um have a next set of questions for Ms. White. And this follows on from points discussed by Mr. Cho uh yesterday. And Ms. Mullin, if we could turn to uh DWR three ten E or I don't think there's a errata on this. Perhaps at PDF page two. And just at the bottom of that page footnote two.
And just for the record, it looks like there is, this is three ten E.
Oh, thank you. Now, Ms. White, can you confirm this document is your testimony, correct?
Correct, yes, it is.
And this footnote two in your testimony states that the supplemental information does not include all beneficial use information and other information that DWR intends to submit in its time extension petition. Correct?
I would say that's, that's there's a little bit more to it outside of what you just mentioned. I would just refer for the record. Footnote two is explicit in my testimony.
Thank you. And so I just want to be clear. Can you explain what footnote two is communicating? That is what information has DWR left out in its response to the AHO supplemental information request? That it would include instead in the time extension petition?
Objection, compound.
I can be clearer. Um
Thank you.
Can you outline specifically, Ms. White, what is missing from DWR's response to the supplemental information? That would have been included in the time extension petition?
Um at this point, I don't, I don't have any additional information to add regarding footnote number two.
You so you are unable to answer what additional information would be available?
There's a separate process ongoing for time extension that um I can't speak to.
Right. And so you are aware uh that the AHO information request number four required DWR to produce data and information showing the maximum amount of water beneficially used under each water right prior to December thirty first, two thousand nine?
Yes, I'm aware.
And so your testimony and that, that of your colleagues and their reports uh testify that that request has been answered with the information you provided.
We provided information with respect to the hearing officer's requests in number, in info number four through two thousand nine.
Hmm. And so in your response, are you able to explain to us how DWR is able to respond to that specific request, request four, without having provided all beneficial use information?
Objection, relevance. The footnote states there may be additional, it may not necessarily reflect. It doesn't say that there is. Um I do think this is outside the scope what was asked for by the AHO, and I think we have established through um other questioning that there are different calculations and the time extension process is a different legal process, which may or may not reflect a different calculation.
Noted, and thank you, Ms. Morris. I'll allow the question, but I I I'm not sure that it's particularly productive, but I think it's fair to ask about um the considerations for purposes of this accounting. So with that, um Ms. White, are you, do you need the question again?
I do. Thank you.
Um. Are you able to explain how DWR is able to respond to request four without having provided all the beneficial use information?
We responded to number four with the based upon the best available information and following the board's guidelines um that methodologies. And so I can't speak to any additional beneficial uses at this time. With the understanding that there is an ongoing separate process for our time extension petition.
Right. And so additional information would be in that um beneficial use, but you cannot specify that at the moment.
Objection, Miss State's testimony.
I, I think it's, it's fair. I will, we pointed out, Mr. Gukaki, that in this footnote, it sounds like it, I'm trying to read the small text. But as I understand it, there was a, it may or may not reflect um may not necessarily reflect. So I, I think your, your question was premised on the idea that there is necessarily additional beneficial use information, which I don't think is what is stated here in footnote two. But if you'd like to rephrase the question, we could go from there.
Thank you, Hearing Officer. And so just to confirm, has DWR provided all beneficial use information in its position?
Objection, asked and answered.
I'm, I'm going to allow him to back up, so overruled.
We've provided the information as I testified and Ms. Wu has testified. We've used all data into the the best information that we have to date regarding beneficial use maximums through the end of December two thousand nine.
Thank you. And so just some specific questions. Is it DWR's opinion that water subject to a direct diversion is per se or necessarily put by DWR to a beneficial use?
Objection, calls for a legal conclusion.
Uh noted, but I'll allow the question.
Can you re- repeat that, please?
Sure. Is DWR's opinion that water subject to a direct diversion is per se or necessarily put by DWR to a beneficial use?
As noted in Ms. Wu's uh testimony and how she calculated beneficial use, that is one of the um types of beneficial uses, direct diversion.
Hmm. With direct diversion. Therefore, is it possible that water subject to direct division has not been put to beneficial use as well?
I don't know. And and then Ms. Wu has testified how we we, DWR, has calculated beneficial use as requested by the AHO.
Thank you. Is Ms. Wu able to answer that or?
Hmm. Are you referring to the direct diversion amounts that we provided in this report? In my report?
Is it possible that the water subject to that direct diversion has not been put to beneficial use?
The amount, the reported direct diversion amount is put to beneficial use.
And so is it DWR's opinion that storage withdrawals are per se put by DWR to a beneficial use?
Storage withdrawal that is put to beneficial use is captured as one component of the amount of beneficial use consistent with the state board guidelines.
Sorry, I'm not sure if you necessarily answered it. Is, is it DWR's opinion that storage withdrawals are put by DWR to beneficial use? So not that it is a beneficial use, but it would be put to a beneficial use.
Storage withdrawal, if it's re, for example, storage withdrawal from overview that's re-diverted to south of Delta reservoirs for storage is not considered beneficially used until it's subsequently withdrawn.
So just to confirm, it is possible that storage withdrawals would not have a beneficial or put to a beneficial use?
That's correct, but the amount reported in my report captures the portion that is put into beneficial use.
And so given that, does this mean that DWR's beneficial use numbers might overstate the actual historic beneficial use of water?
And I'll restate that the amount of beneficial use reported here for AHO's request account for the portion that's withdrawn from storage and put to beneficial use that is not parked in storage.
Sorry, did, and so is that answering? Would it change the numbers if those not taking into account those factors?
So what I'm saying is I've already taken into account which portion is put to beneficial use and which portion is which portion of the withdrawal is re-diverted to storage and not used?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wu. Um and I just want to turn back to Ms. White. I think we have your testimony still up here. Um and if we go to uh PDF page seven around line seven. And just at the bottom around paragraph seventeen. Um. Now, Ms. White, in your testimony, you are discussing here how DWR will operate to its permit terms, correct?
Yes, well, we're, 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 the testimony is that we will operate to our permit terms and the tracking that we have implemented to track our permit terms.
Thank you. And I just want to confirm, is it correct that you're referring here to permit terms for the four state water project permits at issue in these proceedings? And what you've been discussing in your testimony?
Those are part of our tra, well, the, the the permit terms with respect to um information request one, two, and three are part of those historical maximums.
And that's the ones you're referring to here?
Correct.
Thank you. And just at the next paragraph on the next page. Thank you, Ms. Mullin. You discussed and steps taken by DWR and your team, I guess, from an operational standpoint to ensure compliance with those permit terms. Would you say that's a fair characterization of this paragraph?
Yes, that's fair.
Now, I just want to confirm a few things. Are there currently any permit terms under those four permits discussed that consider tribal cultural use resources?
The can you be more specific um when you present um tribal cultural resources in our permits, please?
I, I, I'm sort of generally stating, do, are there terms that require you to consider um a, or account for tribal cultural resources or tribal interests?
Ms. Wu has stated our beneficial uses and um tribal is not one of those.
How about subsistence fishing uses?
I don't believe that is part of our authority. We could bring back up the beneficial use.
No, no.
Definition if needed.
If that's the way you've narrowed uh your positioning, so it wouldn't include sort of, for example, tribal cultural uses of order, for instance, for ceremony based on that definition.
Based on that definition.
And so are you aware that DWR's proposed new permit terms that address impacts on sorry, I uh let me just rephrase that. Are you aware that one of the hearing issues in this proceeding is the impact of the DCP on tribal lands, interests, and cultural resources? And one of the points is considering new terms and conditions in the amended permits, possibly amended.
I am aware that there are proposed permit terms as it relates to tribal resources. I am aware that there are proposed permit terms as it relates to tribal resources.
And I just want to understand. So if there is a new um permit term being introduced, what would your team's process be if that was adopted? What are the steps? Because you outlined a few of those steps here. But what if a new permit term is introduced, what does your team then do?
That calls for a lot of speculation as I sit here today on how that would, any new permit term would be implemented.
Are there any steps that you can say to ensure or track compliance for a new permit term?
As I've stated in even the former, formal panel, we will operate to comply with any with our regulations or requirements as well as any future requirements. But it, without knowing what those are, we will operate to comply.
Yes, yes, that's understandable. So any new terms that require um taking into account tribal cultural resources would need to be um considered and then complied with.
Yes, if it's, yes, if it's a new permit term, then yes.
Thank you. Um, and my last set of questions here, just for Ms. Wu. Um Ms. Wu, is it correct that DWR's testimony is that applying historic maximums prior to December thirty first, two thousand nine? The DCP's yield would be restricted to about six point seven percent of the yield if it weren't restricted to the pre-two thousand ten maximums?
That's not in my testimony. I believe Mr. Fitzhugh is the person to talk about DCP.
You kind of broke off, but I understand Mr. Fitzhugh, were you able to answer?
And you just gave me the question again?
Um, I'm just, uh, for all of you, I guess, um, just confirming that you, it's correct that DWR's testimony is applying historic maximums prior to December thirty first, two thousand nine. The DCP's yield would be restricted to about six point seven percent of that yield if it wasn't, or it weren't restricted to pre-two thousand and ten maximums.
Um, I'm not sure about the percentage because I don't compute that anywhere in my report. Maybe we should bring up my report.
Sure. Are you able to, Ms. Mullin, are you?
Is there which, uh, let's see?
I think it is summarized at Ms. White's testimony.
Right, it's at the end of her testimony as well.
Or it's in three twelve E.
Thank you.
I believe it's table two.
And you said sixty-seven percent?
All right, I, yes, sixty-seven point six percent.
Okay, I mean, I haven't done the division myself, but it looks like three nineteen is about two-thirds of four seventy-two, so that sounds approximately right, yes.
Now, um, either you, Ms. Wu, given that, given the supplemental information DWR provided, has DWR rerun its modeling for how DCP operations, assuming this restricted yield would affect residence time or water quality parameters that influence harmful algal bloom formation?
Objection, relevance outside the scope.
I'll allow the question. I think it is about outside the scope of this supplemental use information, but I'll allow that question. I think it's for you, Mr. Fitzhugh.
Right, so you know, this report describes everything that has been done with respect to operating to historical maximums, so. There's been no additional calcium modeling developed.
Right. Are you aware if DWR has examined the DCP impacts with and without the restriction pre-two thousand and ten maximum historic uses?
No, we have not.
Are you able to say how DWR's conclusions regarding electrical conductivity, chloride salinity, or other water quality parameters would change?
Objection, relevance. Um, this information was provided at the, on behalf of, or sorry, at the request of the AHO. And there was not an additional request to rerun modeling and do any analysis as to the what the impact would be from these restrictions. It was asked to provide what the yield would be if these limitations were applicable and the time extension was not granted.
Well, I don't even know if, yeah, I don't even think of its yield exactly, but noted. Thank you, Ms. Morris. Um, I, I do think, Mr. Gukhaki, we are well beyond. This is beyond the scope of this particular uh accounting, and I think as well, Mr. Fitzhugh's analysis that he's conducted here, and he has also clarified that there is no um additional analyses conducted by, that he's aware of, conducted by DWR. Um, at least as I understand with employing these um historical maximums.
No, and that, that is understandable.
Okay. Let's move forward.
Given the, the multiple scenarios here, we thought it, but I will um move on there. And that's the last of my questioning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, next on my list is Ms. Desjardins, although I do not see her in our list here. Um, and I know she was, she'd been ill, and I'm s- sorry that she's not here. Ms. Meserve, do you, do you happen to have an update?
Yes, Hearing Officer Kinsey, I think that Ms. Desjardins is going to be passing on this cross. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, uh, I know, I still have state water contractors, but did I miss anyone else with respect to any of the Protestants um who have questions for these witnesses? Then I will turn to Mr. Krieger. Do you have any follow-up questions for these witnesses?
Yes, I do, Hearing Officer Kenzie. I have a handful for each of the witnesses.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, Miles Krieger for State Water Contractors. Uh, Ms. Mullin, would you please uh go ahead and pull up DWR exhibit three one two E, as I may be referencing that? Uh, thank you. And will you uh scroll to table three? Mr. Fitzhugh, these uh first series of questions are for you. Um, obviously, please divert them as needed. Uh, Mr. Fitzhugh, your analysis relies on calcium three model results. Is that correct?
That's correct. It involves post-processing calcium three model results.
Does any of your analysis rely on actual historical diversion data?
No, it doesn't have.
Table three results are not actual historical diversions in each of the listed years. Is that right?
That's correct.
And since the modeling results that you relied on are not actual diversions, would you agree that the results in table three are not predictive?
I don't know, um. They're certainly not, I don't know if predictive is the right word because we're not talking about something in the future, but they're definitely not representative of what happened historically in each of those years.
Okay, thank you. Um, and in table three, there are a number of, of red cells, but those red cells are not actual historical exceedances of the limitations that you analyze, are they?
Correct.
It is possible that, I want to ask a couple of questions about um Oroville's storage releases. Um, it is possible that water released from Oroville's storage is not diverted by the state water project. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's, that is correct. The way so the way these computations work is actually parallel to what Ms. Wu discussed. Um, so releases from Oroville that make it to the delta are assumed to go to exports first. But if you had a situation where the exports that were calculated by the model were less than what was released from Oroville that made it to the delta, then some of those releases might go to outflow.
Okay, and I, I want to make sure that I understand. So in, in your analysis in table three, is it generally the case that when you've reduced storage, that experts were, excuse me, exports were also reduced in the same amount? When we're looking again at table three results?
Um, can you be more specific when you talk about reducing storage?
Sure, and I, I, what I have in mind is, uh, for example, nineteen ninety-three, where you have a reduction in storage and that same reduction shows up in the SWP exports or as an export reduction. So it appeared that a reduction in storage corresponds with a reduction in exports.
Right, I did do that. Um, this was discussed a little bit earlier. It may be a little bit of a rough assumption, but if you changed it, there would be no effect on the overall results.
Okay. With respect to, for example, a carriage water, the amount of carriage water release could, excuse me, the amount of carriage water could change the amount of water released from storage that is available for exports in the, in the southern delta. Is that right?
Um, yes, if the exports, if the diversions from the delta change, then yes, there could be changes in carriage water releases.
Okay, and how is carriage water accounted for in table three?
Uh, we did not account for carriage water specifically in this.
Okay, and if you had accounted for carriage water, um, the delta direct diversion amounts would have been less than the reservoir releases. Is that right?
Um, ask that again?
Yeah, so if you had accounted for carriage water, then the delta direct diversion figure would have been less than what the reservoir release figure would have been.
Objection, incomplete hypothetical.
I, I don't have. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, maybe, and I'm confused by the hypothetical, but maybe, Mr. Krieger, do you, do you mean direct diversion at the? I'm not, uh, maybe Mr. Fitzhugh is going to explain this to me, but now I'm lost. What is the relationship between storage releases and direct diversion here? Is, is that what you meant?
Yeah, what I, what I'm getting at is that when you really, you make a release and it includes carriage water, that carriage water is for a regulatory purpose and the amount that is exported from that release would be less than what you had originally released.
So you didn't mean direct diversion, you meant re-diversion of stored water?
Well, as it shows up in the delta direct diversion column, would it show up there, I think is the question.
I see. Okay, let's, and then Ms. Meserve, your objection was based on maybe not specifying whether we're in balanced conditions or excess conditions, or is that, that where we're headed?
Seems like, well, it seems a little bit like redirect right now, but um, so I'm somewhat concerned about that, but yeah, it just didn't seem like that all the different parameters were, were laid out by Mr. Krieger.
Well, let me, let me try that. Well, let's see, we need a question. Mr. Krieger, can you rephrase your question and then specify whether we're talking about balanced or excess conditions? We'll go from there, please.
Um, you know what? I think I'll just, I'll just move on. I think what, what I'm trying to understand is, is what we're sort of looking at in the, the table three results here. Um, and I know, Mr. Fitzhugh, you have, you've mentioned before that um, the results here are not, you know, reflective necessarily of, of historical conditions. Um, and that there may be uh higher values that we're seeing in the table than actually occurred. And what I'm, I'm wondering if carriage water could be a component of why we see uh higher amounts compared to why we see higher amounts potentially.
That's been answered.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, was there a que, was that phrased as a question, Mr. Krieger, or are we moving on?
No, we're, we're, that, that was a new question.
That was a new, well, then I'll overrule the objection. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzhugh.
Yeah, I'm having a little bit of a hard time thinking that one through, to be honest. It's a bit complicated and this um analysis was done. It doesn't really take into account, it doesn't take into account month-by-month operations. It's just based on annual sums of diversion, so. Um. I think I honestly would have to give it a little bit of thought.
Okay.
Does your post-processing analysis account for stored water releases that were made to meet regulatory requirements but were not diverted?
Uh, I think not explicitly. Um, it's the releases from Oroville can basically go to diversions on the feather. Uh, they can go to north bay aqueduct diversions. They can go to exports and then whatever's left I assume would go to outflow, so. Um, sorry, did you ask about regulatory releases?
Uh, yes, and the question was, does your, does your post-processing analysis account for stored water releases that were made to meet regulatory requirements but that were not diverted?
Objection, vagueness as to what regulatory requirements.
Can you specify that, Mr. Krieger?
Uh, salinity requirements.
I think not explicitly. Um the assumption would be that releases go to those other three purposes first. So diversions on the feather, diversions at the north bay aqueduct, and exports. And then if there were remaining storage releases that could go to meet outflow requirements, salinity requirements in the delta. So I think it's in there. It's not very explicitly handled, but it is, the calculation is in there somewhere.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Fitzhugh, I'm, I'm going back to table three here, trying to understand, um that it appears that in some years there may be no re-diversion of previously stored water. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I, I noticed that if you look at, for example, nineteen eighty-three, um there doesn't appear to be any because column two and column three are the same as sum up to column seven. So yes, that's possible.
In your view, is that a realistic outcome or a realistic result?
Um. Calcium is doing what it's supposed to be doing. Nineteen eighty-three is a year when it is incredibly wet the whole year, and I'm pretty sure that there's surplus outflow in every single month throughout the whole year, but I would actually have to defer to Ms. White on whether that's realistic with respect to, you know, an actual operation.
Ms. White, do you have a perspective on that?
I was actually thinking the same thing as far as with nineteen eighty-three being a very wet year. Um, that's the first thing that came to mind, but I, I don't know the actual month-to-month actual conditions, just knowing it's a very wet year.
Okay, and what about, for example, nineteen fifty-two, if we look at that instead of eighty-three? Was nineteen fifty-two also a wet year?
I don't know.
Okay. But I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand the answer, though, is, is it generally speaking, is it a realistic result to have no re-diversion of stored water in a given year?
The only thing that I could say is that nineteen eighty-three was a very wet year, and if there were surplus flows or excess flows, unstored flows throughout the system throughout the entire year, that could be possible, but I'd have to look at the actual conditions.
Okay. Ms. Mullin, would you mind scrolling up to? Ms. Mullin, would you mind scrolling up to table one? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fitzhugh, did you assume on table one that there could be no export of flood control releases?
Yes, there is an assumption, so with regard to the component, well, actually, let me take that back, so table one, you know, these numbers in table one actually came from Ms. Wu. So I think that questions relating to this should be um directed to her.
Okay, Ms. Wu, do you have uh an answer to that question?
Can you repeat your question?
Did you assume that there could be no export of flood control releases as reflected in the numbers that we're seeing in table one?
For flood control releases at Oroville is not captured under the Feather River permits, because that's considered flood releases and flood releases is not part of the beneficial use under the Feather River permits. Um, but there's excess water that show up at the Delta that we're able to pick up under the Delta permits, then it will be captured.
Okay, so if the state water project does have available export capacity, it could divert water at the state water project diversion facilities in the South Delta.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, again, a couple more questions on table one, Mr. Fitzhugh. Um, with respect to rows three and four in table one, can you tell me if Oroville's storage releases for regulatory requirements were included in those rows?
Again, I would defer this to Ms. Wu because the numbers came from her.
Okay, Ms. Wu, would you, would you mind answering?
Can you be more specific about which number you're talking about?
I'm talking about rows three and four, so we can start with, you know, row three. And, you know, the question is, were Oroville's storage releases for regulatory requirements included in that number? So in your twenty-five, forty-eight thousand, I could see.
Now, this is referring to diversions from Delta water, so that would not include Oroville water.
Okay. Would that have included uh any water bypassed at Oroville to meet regulatory requirements?
Can you elaborate on bypass?
Water uh that is collected but then released within thirty days from Oroville to meet a regulatory requirement.
Within, you said within thirty days?
Yes, that's what I mean by bypass, yes.
It depends on, um, goes back to the nuance about the thirty day rule. If the thirty day um, the the thirty day rule only applies to refill period? Is that the break, is that, are you referring to regulated collection, regulatory collection as identified by the State Board methodology?
Well, so for example, if during an initial storage period, any releases of water are made for a regulatory purpose within thirty days of of having been uh uh collected, would that show up in the calculation in for either rows three or four? Are those numbers that we're looking at?
If it's a release of initial storage, then it's considered storage release. So it will not be captured in diversion to South of Delta direct deliveries. But if it's re diverted, it will show up in the number correspond corresponding to SWP export volume.
Okay, and would that same answer apply to any water released outside of the refill period?
It applies to any storage withdrawal.
And does storage withdrawal, but storage, does storage withdrawal include bypassed flow within thirty days of having been collected?
I don't think so. Storage withdrawal is different than regulatory withdrawal.
Okay, and I think what I'm ultimately asking is, any bypassed flow outside of a refill period? Was that included within either of these calculations in rows three or four?
If the bypass flow is not used along the Feather River and it show up in the Delta channels, then it can be captured as div- um diversion to South of Delta direct deliveries. It can also be captured in SWP export volume.
Okay. And again, just so that I'm understanding, any bypass flow from reservoir to meet a regulatory requirement, would, you're saying would be included within the calculations in rows three and four?
Objection, Miss State's testimony.
I think that's, it may, but I think we're trying to get to the bottom of it, so i- if you, um. Ms. Wu, if you can, I it.
Well, and let me add, maybe this will help, um, just what if some of that bypassed flow is not diverted, right? What if it is used for outflow, for example? Would that have been, presumably that would not have been included within the calculations in rows three and four, is that fair?
Objection, I'm unclear as to what kind of bypass flow, are we talking about bypass flow? Could we be specific? Is it bypass flow out of Oroville? Is it a bypass flow requirement? I'm not sure that's been established.
That would be helpful, please, Mr. Krieger.
Well, flow that is released within thirty days from Oroville for the purpose of meeting a regulatory requirement is what I'm.
Well, and maybe this is where we're getting our lines crossed up. I I don't think that's a those that those leases, as I understand Ms. Wu's testimony and the the what I've read in the guidance, is that it can be treated different ways depending on whether we're talking about an initial fill or refill. So I think you have to be more specific when you're using the ti- term bypass flow.
Okay.
They're treated differently, I think, unless I'm confused.
Well, let me ask this, are there is flow bypassed to meet a regulatory purpose outside of a refill period ever?
I think, I think that's possible.
Would any of that flow just described be included in the calculations that resulted in the numbers in rows three or four?
Yes, that's possible.
Is it possible that they were excluded?
If it's picked up upstream of the export facilities.
What if it's used for, what if it's not diverted at all?
Not diverted upstream?
Sure, yes.
Then it's possible that we can pick it up at the export facilities.
Would the numbers calculated in rows three or four change depending on whether that flow was picked up or not?
Action and complete hypothetical calls for speculation.
Good natured. Uh, can you, can you try the question again, Mr. Krieger, maybe being more specific?
So what I'm, what I'm asking is if a flow is not diverted because it is, it has been bypassed upstream to meet a regulatory requirement, I'm wondering if in all instances that flow because it's not diverted, would be included in the calculation for row three and four?
And my answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and Ms. Wu, I assume this question is for you also, um, but again, looking at table one, were export cuts for meeting Delta outflow or salinity regulatory requirements included in rows three or four?
Can you elaborate what you mean by including export cuts?
Well, so for example, if the department makes an operational decision to meet a regulatory requirement by exporting or by reducing exports as opposed to, for example, making a a release of stored water, um, would that export cut to meet the regulatory requirement have been included in the calculation in row three and four?
No, it would not have included.
And if it had been included, would that number be higher, the the numbers calculated for rows three and four?
Objection and complete hypothetical, I don't think a specific time period's been provided by Mr. Krieger.
I don't think that matters, why would the time period?
It it doesn't, it's a, it's a math problem.
It, I I, so overruled.
So under that assumption, are you saying that hypothetically, if the export is higher?
I'm saying if there is a reduction in exports used to meet or needed to meet a regulatory requirement, the amount of export reduction was not included, as I understand your testimony, was not included in rows three and four. And my question is simply, if it had been, if that amount had been included in rows three and four, the numbers that we see in rows three and four would be higher, is that fair?
Objection calls for speculation, facts not in evidence.
Ms. Carol, can you help me here? I mean, my pardon, what I'm struggling with is, I don't even understand the basis for the, I'll be honest. I don't understand the basis for the question, so I can't tell if it's speculative or not. What is it that, what facts would you be looking for, Ms. Carol? And you're on mute, if you're speaking.
I, well, I'm thinking, I'm trying, I don't quite understand the question, I think I'm with you in that, I'm trying to figure out what we're getting at here.
So would, let, maybe let's slow down a little bit, uh, so we can, because I I would imagine you're making an important point, Mr. Krieger, and I don't know what it is. I think these questions are based on the particular equations that are used to make these calculations of rows three and four, right? The 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 elements that are in the equations, would it be helpful, I'm wondering if it'd be helpful for us to look at the equations so that when you ask the question, I can understand what you mean in terms of the equation. Um, can someone help me with the page number for, maybe this is the wrong place, where can we find the equations for these? Calculator.
Page five or the next page, I think.
Thank you, let's try page five.
Are you looking, sorry, are you looking for the equations in Ms. Wu's testimony that calculated the numbers or the calculations are for the table? That is in Mr. Fitzhugh's report.
Well, I'm trying to figure, I mean, what I'm, Mr. Krieger is asking about reductions in exports, as I understand, and whether or not it's calculated into rows three and four, which I understand to be a question about whether or not that's a, that's an element of the equation, but I don't remember what the equation is off the top of my head. Can someone help me out here, is the?
I think it depends on which, it's kind of compound questions. Are you looking at the the four million number for the um, uh, calculation in number two, are you looking at the beneficial use number?
Can we go back, Ms. Mullin, can we go back up to where we were? Okay, so I'm, we're looking at let's, let's use the four million number, so SWP export volume, where is that defined as to how that is, how that was calculated? Or maybe Ms. Ms. Wu, can you just tell me, and I can write it down? What elements went into the SWP export volume um as the table, as the calculation was made here?
It's just a measurement of water moved through banks pumping plant that's
Okay.
diverted under SWP water, right?
So it's the measurement and then you subtract out water that isn't SWP.
Correct.
Okay. So then your question, Mr. Krieger, is would that number change? I I guess I don't understand, if if in fact DWR diverted less water, then the number would change, I I just don't understand the basis of your question.
If DWR diverted less water in an effort to meet a regulatory requirement, and we calculated whatever the quantity of water not diverted would be, that I assume, or as I understand Ms. Wu's testimony, is not included in rows three or four. And my question is simply that, well, if you did include those numbers, then the amounts or the sums that we're seeing in rows three and four would change, and presumably they would be higher. That's it.
Okay, so but what, but, so you're saying if the water was not uh, if there were not reduction, I guess I just don't understand the point of the question, because the water would have to actually be diverted to count as SWP export volume, right? Or are you making a different assumption, underlying assumption?
Well, we, I I think it's important to distinguish that diversion rates and diversion numbers are not necessarily synonymous with beneficial use. And so just because you don't have an amount of water diverted doesn't mean that that water is not being beneficially used.
Okay, I think I understand where you are, and so it's a much simpler question than I thought, maybe thought we were having. So with that, please, if you would, go back to before I interrupted you.
No, and that's fine, I I think I, I think I understand the response well enough to be able to move on.
Okay.
And, Mr. Fitzhugh, I just have a couple more sort of climate change related questions as they factor in your post-processing analysis, um, thank you, Ms. Wu. Isn't it true that the modeling that was post-processed included climate change assumptions, for example, or in particular adjusted historical hydrology?
That's true, the hundred year hydrologic record was basically adjusted to represent climate change impacts that have occurred over the last thirty years.
Okay, and wouldn't these climate change assumptions impact the results that were intended to represent the historic period of time prior to two thousand nine?
Yes, they would.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. White, I have a few questions.
Uh, sorry. But thirty year period starts in nineteen ninety-one. Um, so those from ninety-one to two twenty-twenty-one, that's actual historical hydrology, it's just before nineteen ninety-one. So in the years before ninety-one, it would make a difference.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. White, I have a few questions for you, if you don't mind. From a, from an operations perspective, when you're operating the state water project and you make export cuts in the South Delta to create new Delta outflow. To meet a regulatory requirement. Do you do you expect other water rights holders to divert that outflow?
Objection to the extent it calls for a legal conclusion.
Noted.
We reduce our exports to meet a regulatory requirement. For that very purpose, I don't have an opinion on whether who else could re divert that water.
Would you but would you expect from an operational perspective? That others might re divert it such that it, for example, could impact? Compliance with the regulatory requirement?
We look at all conditions in real time and. Based upon. In flows and what regulatory requirement we are operating to. Um. We make that operations adjustment to meet our, say, D sixteen forty one standards. So. Any additional diversion that I mean, that's out of our control as it relates to, you know, what others may do. But we take actions to meet our D sixteen forty one standards.
Okay, but you don't assume that others, if they do divert the water, have a right to do that necessarily. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Um, yesterday you were asked, Ms. White, a few questions about uh the CVP, and I just wanted to to. Make sure I'm understanding. Uh, it's true that the state water project and the Central Valley project operate under an agreement called the coordinating operations agreement, right?
Yes.
You're familiar with that agreement?
I am.
Would you agree that by operating to that agreement, neither the state water project nor the Central Valley project adversely affect each other's rights?
Correct.
And so operating consistently with that agreement? Could there be a scenario where DWR can divert unreg- unregulated flow during balanced conditions?
Yes, there could be instances um. Where there is unregulated flow. In balance conditions that we can pick up, but. All of our operations are coordinated with the CVP.
Okay, thank you. Okay, those are all the questions I have for Ms. White. Um, Ms. Wu, I do have a few more uh for you if you don't mind. Um, your analysis or your report applies the calculations contained in the State Water Board's licensing guidance, correct?
Correct.
And does that guidance document include water stored in Orville for less than thirty days? That was collected during refill periods in your beneficial use calculation?
Um, it's considered if it's within thirty days. Within the refill period, it is considered regulatory. Collection or withdrawal, and it is considered part of the direct diversion. If it's. Diverted. Or if it's used nicely.
Okay. Does the guidance provide for? Or include water stored in Orville for less than thirty days, collected at times other than the refill periods that you use to calculate beneficial use?
Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, does the does the guidance document include? Uh, would it include water stored in Orville for less than thirty days? That was collected at a time other than a refill period um in the beneficial use calculation?
It'll be. It it'll be under the. Initial collection storage period then.
Okay, it would be part of the initial storage period. Okay. Uh, then does the does the guidance include state water project export cuts in the South Delta for purposes of creating outflow? As part of the beneficial use calculation?
No, it doesn't.
Does the department's calculation of the hearing officers requested volumetric limits in the South Delta include previously stored water? At banks? Pumping plant?
Objection vague and ambiguous as to what volumetric limitation.
The volumetric limitation calculated a response to the hearing officer's request.
I think so. We'll go with any of any of them.
Can you repeat your question?
Sure. It's the question is, does DWR's calculation? Of the hearing officers requested volumetric limits in the supplemental is requested by the supplemental information. In the South Delta include previously stored water, I said, include previously stored water that is diverted at banks?
Yes. It includes that.
Okay. Um, and yesterday, I think you testified or you mentioned that you didn't include water collected in the Orville flood control pool. Is that correct?
Not included under Feder River permits. But if the flood releases reach the delta. Um, and it's picked up under our Delta water permits, then. It can be included in. Delta permits.
Okay. Did you but did you account for water originating from that flood con- uh that flood pool? In your beneficial use calculation if the water was used for a regulatory purpose downstream?
I I don't see how that factors into my calculation.
Okay. And so I think it's fair to say no. Then is that is that right?
Can you ask your question again?
It was just, did you account for for water originating from that flood pool? In your beneficial use calculation where that water was used for a downstream regulatory purpose?
No.
Okay. Those are all of the questions that I have. Thank you very much to each of you.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger, and thank you to our witnesses. Um. We've been going for a fair amount of time, and my guess, Ms. Carol, is that you may want a moment to think about redirect. But at this point, do you plan on? Well, do you need a moment and do you plan on redirect?
I wouldn't mind the moment, but I we don't plan on redirect.
Okay, um, well, if we're not, if we're not going to have redirect, we the hearing team doesn't have additional questions. So if there is no redirect, I think we may be. Done for the day. Uh, for the most part, so my inclination would be to finish up, but. Yes, to you.
Perfect. Um, I guess our only question left is we would like to move exhibits into evidence, and we were wondering if you wanted that done orally or if we could do that in writing. Otherwise, I'll be saying many, many numbers for a while.
Right, let's do it in writing, please. That would be very much appreciated, uh, moving exhibits into evidence. And then I let me look in terms of setting up deadlines. Let me look to the protestants um and feel free to raise a hand if you have a comment on this. I would like to deal with. Um. Objections on DWR's case in chief exhibits. And and the exhibits related to the supplemental information um. Before we reconvene the hearing, which I know there's a there's a pending request to postpone that, but currently, I believe, is scheduled for August twelfth. So I would like to have some time for the AHO to deal with them before then. Um, but in terms of getting objections in. I'm I'm. I had been thinking during the break that we could set it up to be um objections due July. Eighteenth so that it's after the deadline for case in chief with the current deadline for case in chief. Um, exhibits. And then any responses to objections from DWR a week after that, July twenty fifth. Um. I guess, well, Ms. Carol, since you're on screen, do you have any objection to that schedule?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll look to the protestants. Is there any? Uh, any comments or or objections to that schedule in terms of evidentiary objections? And I can provide instructions. Again, I'd like to do well. Uh, yeah, I I can provide more details, but again, I'd like it to be in table format. Um, and I can provide examples of those, or you can look them up in the site's proceeding that worked fairly well, and I think it. Um, you would provide it in Word and and I'll give you instructions, but provide them in in PDF and Word format so that. The responding party can then respond right in the table, and then I can issue the ruling right in the table as well. Ms. Misserv.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Um, would it be possible to push that out one more week? So it would be um July twenty. Seventh. Would that be one week?
I believe it would be twenty fifth if I'm.
Twenty fifth, sorry.
I think.
I think we got all turned around today on our numbers. Um, just because of DWR having so many exhibits and wanting to be able to um. Take some time to see what would be appropriate to object to. That would be helpful to um the protestants if that would be possible.
I think with only the problem is then I give uh DWR until what August? First. Uh, and then I only have. A short time. Let's see. I mean, you have you've had the exhibit since. Even the ones that came in later since I I guess you had the May twenty seventh exhibits are the most recent, and you've had them since May twenty seventh. All right, we can do July twenty fifth and then August first. For DWR's response. Or any, I guess, the DWR's response to their exhibits. Um. We'll do that. I will document that in writing as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Procedural issues we should address? Uh, you can expect uh a. A letter that I I don't know if I'll do it as an updated hearing notice. Um, I I mean, first of all, I need to rule on the pending motion, so I owe that. Um, I need I also, I think we have some just very logistical requests of the protestants and your. Case in chief exhibits to include exhibit numbers and a few kind of. Um, nitpicky but important to my team and possibly other parties kind of requests uh for for doing those, and we will get those out, and then I will also document this schedule. Uh, for evidentiary objections. And our discussion about. Um. I'll have more information about the site visit. I owe you, I think, the results of a poll which we are putting together, but that's also on my to do list. So I have a number of things that I owe all of you. Um, but we are currently not scheduled to meet again until. Uh, at least. August twelfth, I believe. So that would be um. If there are things that come up in the meantime, I think email would be the best way to deal with those. While we. Um. Spend some time apart. Ms. Carol.
Apologies, Hearing Officer Kinsey, got my calendar to finally go to July and August, and um. I was wondering if it would be possible to have DWR's deadline actually be July eighth? Or that or August eighth? Now I'm in the wrong month. For response to the objections that would give us two weeks.
Gives you more time. No, that's fair enough. I extended it for the protestant, so I'll extend it for you. Um, yes, we can do that. That's fine.
Thank you. And then in the um updated hearing notice, if you could also help us by including the other deadlines we've discussed with, you know, information requests. Uh, site visit, other various things, that would be really helpful too, is we have a lot of dates in July and August.
Yes, I will make my best attempt. If I forget anything, please let me know, and I can try to, but I agree, having an updated document with consolidated deadlines. On everything would be helpful for everybody, so I will attempt to do that.
Thank you.
Are there other issues we should address? Today. Then with with that, I first I I intended to and didn't get a chance. We got off on redirect. I very much wanted to thank the witnesses for your time and attention yesterday and today and. And for some of you prior, um, I very much appreciate your testimony and your contribution today. I appreciate um the cooperation of all of you to get through this in two days, and you will be hearing from. The AHO on a number of items, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.